Waiting on the technology to kick in.
Mr. Mayor, you couldn't hear it, but it is recorded.
It is recording. Okay, thank you. Oh, I will be the first one to silence my cellphone.
Thank you.
Well, welcome everyone. It's Monday, February twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. It's six P. M. It's time for our regularly scheduled city council meeting. I'd ask clerk to certify the meeting notice.
This meeting has been noticed in accordance with Idaho Code seven four dash two zero four.
Clerk could call a roll please.
Councilmember Heller.
Present.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Here.
Councilmember Jorgensen. Here. Councilmember Page.
Here.
Thank you. Next item is the pledge of allegiance. If you join me. Uh, before I go any further, uh, we've got a lot of folks here tonight. The item of interest likely is the uh, ordinance that deals with parking. Is everyone here here on the parking issue? Okay. So I saw some plantation signups and I didn't want anybody to be confused uh, with the River Club application. That's not on the agenda tonight. Okay, so we're on parking. We're all good, right? Okay, good. That uh, will go on. Uh, next items changes to the agenda. See none. We'll move on to uh, the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Thank you. There's a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Uh, hearing number clerk call a roll.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, next item is special business. Uh, council, the staff reports are in your packet. Uh, if there's any questions you have, uh, that you would like to uh, have a response to in this meeting, uh, feel free to ask now or contact the department head. It's your pleasure. Okay, we'll move on. Item G one, uh, this is a public hearing that's been continued from February thirteenth. So the hearings are still open. Uh, we had a number of folks testify regarding the proposed parking ordinance. Uh, just for those of you that weren't here at the last meeting, uh, we were taking public testimony. Uh, we concluded, uh, gosh, it was around ten thirty, wasn't it? Something like that. And uh, we left the hearing open so we could hear from others that didn't have a chance to testify last time that wanted to this time. So what we're gonna do, uh, Mr. Don May, uh, represented several people last time with some testimony. There was a late submittal that he provided to the council that the council did not have time to absorb uh, on the spot. So the decision was made, uh, uh, to give the council time to digest that. And uh, there were some clarifying questions asked, so uh, Mr. May will have ten minutes to respond to the council and present this information uh, requested on behalf of uh, five people he is representing. Is that accurate, Mr. May?
Yeah, that's.
Okay. Well, we'll get it as quick as we can because it looks like we got a lot of people that want to have their say, so I want to be very sensitive to that, so we're not keeping people here too late. Uh, there's a signup sheet over here, uh, to your left. And um, if you'd like to testify, you can sign up. If you want to state your opinion and not testify, you can also do that. It'll all become part of the record. The council, uh, will be continuing to listen to input. Uh, once we close the public hearing, uh, the council will start discussing the testimony that they've heard. And there'll be uh, some deliberation that takes place. Uh, I don't anticipate unless I've misread drastically uh, the intent of the council that there'll be any final decision made on the parking ordinance tonight. But uh, we want to get the input. Uh, you're welcome to listen to the council deliberate. Once I close the public hearing, though, the public access to speaking to the council, uh, will cease. So we'll all understand that. Okay, very good. So with that, yes, yes.
Just for clarification, you stated that people could share their opinion but not testify. What does that constitute?
Well, just filling out the form because the form has a uh, a neutral support or opposed, and then there's a box to check whether you want to testify or not, so. The point is you can let us know what you think, uh, but you don't have to get up and tell us what you think. If that makes any sense. And sometimes we we hope you'll be compassionate when you're telling us what you think. Okay. Uh, so we are now, uh, continuing the hearing. Uh, Mr. May, I'm gonna have you go ahead and go first, uh, so we can, uh, uh, deal with that and then uh, what we've been doing is uh, asking you to uh, let us know what you think in a three-minute time period so we can get everybody a spot. Uh, Mr. May is representing five different people. And uh, that's why he's getting a little longer period plus uh, there were some questions that uh, he was asked to respond to at the last hearing. So with that, uh, soon as we get our technology working, we will we will proceed. I'm not being rude. I keep the time on my phone, so just. Find my stopwatch.
Okay, uh, my name is Don May. Thank you very much for allowing me to present again tonight. The agenda, the purpose of the presentation, what is affordable housing? What should government regulate? How does the free market ensure there's enough parking? At a minimum, Garden City should mimic Boise. Other questions answered, summary and recommendation. Purpose. Uh, the purpose is to answer questions, comments and concerns that Garden City raised about Dr. Shoup's best practices and uh,
Mr. May, let me interrupt your statement. Would you give us your address again?
Yes.
Did you already do that?
Yeah, so my address here in Garden City is one twenty East Forty First Street. My physical addresses, I've got a couple of them, but one of them's uh, one seven four two four Plaza Otonal, San Diego, California.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, what is affordable housing? Affordable housing does not mean subsidized housing. It means the next level up. The gap between subsidized and luxury housing. A better term might be underserved or attainable housing. Are developers going to be able to provide thirteen hundred dollar apartments based on parking reductions? No, but they can provide twenty one hundred dollar apartments, which are much better than three thousand dollar luxury apartments. Luxury apartments will continue to be built by most developers because they typically make the most money. Garden City's residents need help. The average household income is Garden City, and Garden City is just over fifty thousand dollars and can subsequently a mortgage of just thirteen ninety-four per month. The average home price in Garden City. Can we move this, uh? I'm having a hard time. Just this thing right here. I can't. Oh, thank you so much. They look great. The average home price in Garden City right now is five hundred forty-three thousand dollars, resulting in a mortgage of thirty-six thirteen, which results in the shortfall of over twenty-two hundred dollars. A single parking spot costs up to forty-five thousand and half a guest parking spot costs up to thirty-seven thousand, resulting in a total cost of up to eighty-two thousand dollars. It is possible to save five forty-six per month off one's mortgage just by trimming these parking costs. An example of how expensive parking is, San Francisco residents can expect to pay an average of three fifty a month for a parking spot, while New York City residents expect to pay an average of five seventy a month for the same apartment parking spot. Uh, this chart shows how a budget unit can be built for a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars less than the luxury unit. Reductions in parking, guest parking, interior finishes, elevators and square footage all have the potential to create a budget unit that is a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars cheaper than a luxury unit. You may not get all the bells and whistles, but you'll pay a lot less for rent or mortgage. Savings achieved from such reductions are absolutely passed along by the developer. In this example, a fancier unit costs twenty-nine hundred dollars per month, while a cheaper unit with less finishes and amenities costs only twenty-one hundred dollars per month. The lower cost creates a niche in the market that will undercut the competition. This chart shows how the household incomes required for different units range from a hundred and six to a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. Affordable townhomes could be built and sold for four hundred thousand dollars if all the bells and whistles are trimmed down. That means the household income required for such a unit drops from one forty-six to one oh six thousand dollars. That's a significant difference. What should government regulate? As a gentle reminder, according to the parking study that Garden City performed, the majority of your citizens, or ninety-six percent, want less government regulation of parking on private property. Of all the regulations that Garden City governs, parking is the most expensive. For example, a unit's landscaping cost of eight thousand dollars or its insulation cost of seven thousand dollars comes nowhere near the forty-five thousand dollars that can be spent on one parking spot. Government has a role to regulate, but it's not on private lands. Why? Government cannot plan for every possible scenario. There are always going to be unique situations where code doesn't really apply. Government regulation on private property often has unintended consequences. As an example, you'll be unintentionally steering development towards not building enough affordable three-bedroom units if you require two parking spaces for all of them. This will really hurt forty percent of U. S. households with one car or or less, like seniors who have downsized or single parents. Eight and a half percent of Americans do not have any car at all. Making housing for this admittedly small population is also one of our goals. Government's role is to proactively regulate public on-street parking. You're currently hearing complaints from people where you have not yet adequately regulated public on-street parking. Public parking spaces are not free. In Garden City, the average parking spot front of a business costs ten thousand dollars. Unfortunately, public spaces in Garden City are not managed at all, and people are allowed to park at will with no restrictions or price to pay. Free curb parking on a crowded street gives a small temporary benefit to a few drivers who are lucky on a particular day, but it creates large social cost for everyone else every day, such as increased time and trouble finding a spot and less business revenue. At the very least, on heavily parked streets, government should restrict how long people can park or charge for doing so, say with a minimum one hundred dollar per year permit cost. In exchange for paying one hundred dollars, people's parking problems are solved. It's a give and take. Public parking regulations are never set in stone. Parking public regulations slowly evolve over time as new development occurs. How does the free market ensure there's enough parking? Developers do not want to get stuck with a bunch of well-sold units because they did not provide enough parking. As an example, even if there are no parking regulations at all, in my townhouse development, I would still provide an average of one and a half spaces for my three-bedroom units. There's simply not enough demand for fewer than that at my location, given the current density and amenities nearby. Developers always chase demand. Developers will provide enough parking on private land so long as government lets developers know ahead of time how much on-street parking will be available to their residents. In this example, the developer decided to build ninety units of off-street parking because only ten on-street spaces would be available. Banks serve as a check on the feared parking Wild West. This headline reads, quote, lenders still want parking in apartment builds. San Diego removed parking minimums earlier this year for apartment projects near transit, but a lack of parking could be a problem for lenders, unquote. Every developer uses a bank. Banks won't loan to a development that is underparked because they'll, they're afraid they'll lose their money. Banks are very conservative about parking as a result. No developer is going to build an apartment complex in Garden City with zero parking spaces at this point in time. Even the Sonder created one space per unit. That developer did so because one because no one would buy or rent their units with no parking. In other words, the free market drove the developer to build enough parking for their units. At a minimum, Garden City should mimic Boise. If you absolutely must regulate private parking, we urge you to use a combination of Janus and Boise's regulations. You can see that in some cases, we actually recommend going with the higher of the two regulations for simplicity's sake. Councilwoman Jorgensen wanted to make the code more streamlined. So this is a summary of the code chart I just showed you. One-half spot per studio, one spot for one to three bedrooms, two spots for four or more bedrooms, and one to ten guest ratio, excuse me, for guest parking. Please use Janus's commercial recommendations and please adopt parking benefit districts. As a final compromise, if the former side was not strong enough for you, we urge you to limit three bedrooms to no more than one and one-half spots. Additionally, we urge you to make guest parking no more than one to two for the first four units and then one to ten after that. Other questions answered? Are savings passed on to the consumer? Absolutely. Less features means less cost, which results in a lower price. A budget-minded developer will subsequently be able to undercut the competition, his competition on price, often by a significant margin. How much does parking enforcement cost? Minimal enforcement is required most of the time. Tickets pay for themselves. Ticket revenue typically generates twice the cost of enforcement. It is recommended to use the lowest level of government official to minimize cost. Permits generally pay for themselves and administrative costs once the price reaches one hundred dollars per year. Will a lack of parking requirements steer wealthier residents away? No, new housing will always be expensive. It's just a matter of how expensive. To buy or even rent new housing, you must be upper-middle class. Even the least expensive two-bedroom apartment will require a household income of eighty-two thousand dollars. The household income required for a luxury townhome is nearly twice that at one hundred forty-six thousand dollars. How can we ensure public safety? A towing company will be happy to patrol and respond to complaints, keeping areas free of illegally parked cars. Additionally, cars parked on the street make for narrower streets, which typically leads to people driving slower and therefore safer. What if there's not enough parking for businesses? Providing enough parking on private property is one hundred percent the responsibility of small business owners. If they don't provide enough private parking while working in conjunction with the government for public parking available on the street, they'll go out of business. Will A. C. H. D. take parking away? We wrote to A. C. H. D., and while they wouldn't give us an exact number, we're going to assume it's highly unlikely that A. C. H. D. will take away parking on ninety-eight percent of Garden City streets. The small number of streets that might lose parking are just a normal risk of governance. Government need not have a crystal ball to effectively plan for tomorrow. What's the impact of the comprehensive plan on parking? The following plan's goals are supported by denser, more affordable housing and highly reduced parking requirements. The diversity, the diversity in housing goal places an emphasis on eliminating substandard housing and providing affordable housing and mixed-income housing in its place. The evolve as a destination goal places a focus on supporting business, commerce and entrepreneurship. Do we already have enough variety of housing? No, in fact, city code directs city council to seek a quote variety of housing. In this chart of two and three-bedroom homes and townhomes currently for sale in Garden City, represented by blue dots, the median housing price for older homes is an astounding five hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. Our proposed parking reductions will target townhomes that can be sold for four hundred thousand, which still requires a hefty household income of a hundred and six thousand dollars. Yet this will fill a gaping hole in the market for brand-new, quote, attainable housing. How are existing residents affected? Garden City residents may be forced out of their current rentals due to rising prices or redevelopment and will want alternative, more affordable places to live. Will housing values decline with affordable development nearby? No, this study showed that even subsidized housing increased neighboring property values an average of point nine percent and saw no increases in crime. Because new development is by its very nature newer and better than anything that had been there before, it almost always drives up home values, even when it's subsidized housing, which this is not. How will the tax base be affected? In this example, we see five townhomes can be put on one-quarter acre with your current parking requirements. Eight townhomes can be put on the same land with reduced parking requirements and reduced unit sizes. The luxury townhomes on the left are only worth two-point-seven-five million, while the attainable units on the right are worth three-point-two million, which is a sixteen percent increase in the tax base. Some may ask, do sales taxes increase with the installation of parking meters? Yes, Austin, Texas saw ten percent growth in sales tax revenue the year after it implemented parking meters due to customers being able to access businesses more easily. In Old Pasadena, California, in its first year, the parking benefit district saw a hundred percent increase in sales tax revenue. Some may also ask, how large are the excess funds from a parking benefit district? Boulder, Colorado funds over eight hundred thousand dollars worth of benefits every year. Old Pasadena has excess funds of over one million dollars every year. Summary. Developers will provide enough parking so long as government tells them how much public parking is available. Bank loans will ensure there's enough parking. Parking enforcement typically pays for itself and then some. The average Garden City resident earns less than half what's required to afford the average home mortgage. Attainable housing practices can save up to one hundred eighty-two thousand dollars per unit. Attainable housing practices also typically create a higher tax base than luxury building practices. Garden City should mimic Boise's code. Recommendation: No regulations are preferred. However, if you must regulate, Garden City should mimic Boise. We believe it's best to not regulate parking on private property at all. However, if you absolutely must regulate private property parking, we strongly urge you to use a combination of Janus and Boise's proposed regulations with a focus on tandem parking, guest parking, studio units, three-bedroom units and parking benefit districts. The parking regulations can be shown, can be summarized as shown no matter the type of unit. Studio is one-half space, one or three bedroom is one space, or more bedroom is two spaces. Guest should be one to ten ratio. Commercial should use Janus's recommendations, and we should use Janus's parking benefit district recommendation as well. As a final compromise, if the former side was not strong enough for you, as I've shown you earlier, we urge you to limit three bedrooms to no more than one and one-half spots. Additionally, we urge you to make guest parking no more than one to two for the first four units and then one to ten after that. Thank you very much for your time and patience, everyone and everyone here. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. May. Uh, again, very efficiently delivered. Appreciate that.
Thanks.
Uh, we've got about thirteen or fourteen people, uh, that have signed up to testify. Uh, council, do you have any questions for Mr. May before we release him?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, yes, go ahead.
Don, thank you.
You're welcome.
You did that well. Just a, a couple of questions, so. Um, I've done a lot of research too since your last presentation, asking questions. So one concern I have, you mentioned, you know, people can pay a hundred dollars for a permit.
Yeah.
You know, so there's gonna be a lot of people who don't want to pay a hundred dollars.
That's right.
And so they're gonna park further out where the parking district isn't and just walk to their apartment. So what do you say to people who are outside of the parking district and now those people are parking in their neighborhoods because they don't want to pay the hundred dollars? So how, how, how would you respond to that?
That's a great question. Um, you know, I don't have a, a magical answer to that. I think that that's that these supply and demand issues are something that that city council kind of has to look at on a per-geography basis and help. Uh, for instance, well, here's kind of the scientific answer to that is once, um, according to Dr. Shoup, once demand in any streets reaches eighty-five percent, which is typically about one to two spaces empty per block. Once it gets more than that, then you should implement this, uh, permits or meters. So if you're if you've done too small of an area, for instance, and it starts to spread like as you mentioned, then maybe the parking district is gonna have to spread beyond that as well. I guess that's the best way I can answer that.
Good. Another question, um, I have is you're advocating for no parking restrictions and on, on private property, and so it's really up to us to manage public parking.
Yes.
So if you build a development, would you, would you agree with the statement that developers need to acknowledge that residents have a need for parking and that it's their responsibility, uh, to take care of their residents' needs?
Absolutely, and, and the key there is that they have A. E. That need often varies dramatically based on this geographic location that it's in. Um, you know, as the, the most extreme example, if you go the, I've never been to New York City, but if you go into New York City, I'm sure you've got a, uh, you know, restaurant and all these things are right there for you, so very little need for, for cars. And you also have a robust transportation system there too. The, so there, there are differences in, in the amount of parking that's demanded. There's also differences in how much people actually bring with them. As I mentioned, there are some some people, eight and a half percent of people don't have a car at all. Um, some people, uh, just, they, they just have one car, but they need a lot of bedrooms for their children. Uh, single parents is a good example of that, or, or senior citizens who have downsized. That's another. Those are kind of the two biggest groups that they're just bringing with them, only a smaller demand for parking.
So here's kind of a follow-up to that question.
Sure.
So you agree that it's the developer's responsibility to take care of the parking needs of their residents?
Absolutely.
But we shouldn't, we shouldn't you, you don't want us to, to regulate private parking.
Right.
So what happens when you're wrong? So you build a development and you don't have enough parking, so all of those parking goes on the street. So should I then charge you, the developer, for not having enough parking and levy a fine against you for throwing cars onto the street because you did not take care of the parking needs of your, your, um?
That's a great question. So what happens? Well, the first thing that will happen is the, the developer may lose a tremendous amount of money. There's there's a tremendous amount of risk that the banks, not just the developer, but the banks. I mean, this stuff is looked at very, very carefully. You don't, people don't just say, I'm gonna build a, you know, a place with no parking spaces and throw millions, tens of millions of dollars for a development like that. It just doesn't happen. They try very, very carefully to match the projected parking needs, but let's say in your own sense that this is true, that he doesn't, he or she doesn't build enough parking. Then in that case, what, what I recommend doing is, uh, the government should be regulating the, what is on the street, what is public there. They, there's nothing stopping government. Let's say, uh, let's say some developer comes and builds a massive apartment complex that's got three hundred units or something like that. And on the street, it's just clogged for, you know, three or four blocks away because they don't, they didn't build any parking at all. And they said, well, you know, there's no current parking regulations there. We're just gonna use the street. Well, you know what's perfectly within and well within the rights of, of, uh, your very city councils, I'm looking here at each and every one of you to do, is to regulate public parking and to say, too bad, so sad, you should have thought of that. But right now, we're, we're gonna regulate all those streets that your current guys are parking on. And we're either gonna charge me, we're either gonna meter it or we're gonna charge parking permits. And by the way, for your three hundred residents, we're gonna, the way we're gonna regulate that is by street frontage. So since you only have enough, uh, street frontage for, say, what would have taken maybe ten houses to take up, we're gonna give you ten permits and that's it. And that's all they get.
So you're, so you're suggesting that we penalize the renter and not the developer in that case, because that's exactly what happened.
Renter wouldn't go there.
Well, they, well.
Developer would be severely damaged.
Well, I don't know if you're saying that you have to go on, uh, if, if, uh, if you don't provide enough parking, then they have to go on the street and we regulate parking. Actually, I'm penalizing that poor person because you don't have enough parking in your spot. So
Yes.
The ownerships from you
Uh-huh.
to that renter and it's city government that's the kind of the bad guy for then.
I completely disagree that the ownerships to the, from, from me to the renter. I agree that it's shared with the renter, but it is more, much more, the renter can move out and granted, that's a terrible thing when somebody has to move because, because they're restricting park, because you would restrict parking. But the developer is gonna be the one that's gonna be up the creek without a paddle because they're gonna have all these units that aren't gonna be worth anything. I mean, we're, we're kind of, we're dealing with these hypotheticals that just in the real world don't happen because, um, that people don't take fifty million dollars and build a, and, or, or anything that's worth for me, it's my whole life savings, you know, I don't just take this and so I'm gonna bet on the fact that they'll never regulate public parking on my street. So I'm gonna just say, there's not gonna be enough parking there. I'm gonna assume that there's always gonna be public parking there. How foolish of me. And you know what? If, if I do that, then I deserve to go out of business. And I've said that before, the businesses that don't plan property deserve to go out of business. I'm sorry, that's part of the, the, the free market economics, the way it works, and I'm sorry, that's part of the, the, the free market economics, the way it works, and. That's a terrible thing, but huh, you just. If you're that stupid, you deserve to go out of business. I mean, that, that's just the bottom line. You, you know, you're really, that, that's. I can't imagine any, any fellow, fellow developer that I know that I've come in contact with would, much less bank, would ever allow that to happen.
I, I'm not gonna ask, because we got other people who wanna testify, but there are some examples of Boise where there isn't enough parking. And it's a mess. And so um, the developers, you know, use the code to their advantage. They, they got as many reduction as they can. There's more cars than there are um, people in the, you know, there's, than the spaces allowed. And you go to some of those parts of town, and we, I can mention that, it's just, people don't go there anymore, and it's starting to hurt the businesses. And I was, you know, there's just, it, it hasn't worked. So I, I don't know if I fundamentally agree that. You know, it, it um, you know, the developers will build something, you know, with, with minimal parking. And, and just because we would never do that, I think there's a clear examples that, that is the case. And then they just, well, we built it. You know, but the people park on the street, it's their problem. So.
There's nothing stopping Boise City, by the way, from going in there and doing what I just said, which is.
I think we're gonna go ahead and stop now.
Yeah, so that.
Let, let's, let's move on. Uh, Councilmember Jorgensen had a question.
Mr. Ray, if your premise is that um.
Hard to hear you, I'm sorry.
Sorry. If the premise is uh, we can promote affordable housing by. Uh, not legislating parking requirements. Then is it your premise that we would then, that the council or government should legislate enforcement? Meaning that we should cap how much you could make on a development or cap the rental fee?
No, why would you do that? No, those are completely separate issues.
Because your premise is that whatever savings you generate by not creating parking. You pass on to the consumer. So then, if you're asking us to legislate or not legislate to support that. Then, then we would also need to enforce it, correct?
No, there's no need to enforce that. That's frankly, that's hogwash. That's, that's. I, I take great offense to that, that, that um, that the savings wouldn't be passed on, that these niches wouldn't be. Created in a natural marketplace and, and uh. Yeah, but you know, if you wanna im- im- implement rent control. Be my guest, you know, that's a totally different topic for a totally different subject. And I. I, is that what your, is that what yours is suggesting?
Wait, I don't wanna start questioning the council right now. We, we've got a lot of folks to testify. Thank you for your effort, Mr. May. Appreciate it. Uh, we'll move on now. Uh, in no particular order, I've kinda shuffled these around. Uh. Uh, Karen Hauser is first up. Uh, Karen, if you wouldn't mind, we'll come to the center podium, and then everybody. And see if you would, welcome, uh, and give us your name and address for the record. Oh. Would you like, would you like me to put you down for the, okay, all right, okay.
In no particular order. Um, total benefit from eliminating the men apartment, and ones not getting this department in the neighborhood areas. Not the neighboring businesses, not the residents who move into apartments. Two and three bedroom units typically have two adults, or at least adults in team, I think perhaps. That there's, it's not realistic to have a three or four bedroom apartment and expect them to have a one car. That's not, that's just not reality. I've done uh. Work in real estate, I'm a retired interior designer. I have some sense of housing, I'm twenty percent wood, apartment business. Will the city government have the, um, eliminated, you know, the public apartments? If you want to accommodate a minimum five year apartment, because if you have a grand, it would still be, it's not, not automatically. You're putting the cart before the horse. If you want to um, focus the primary energy on developing, that's kind of the first, that would be. Make it free, reward people for riding the bus. And solve uh, shelter shelters that get them out of the sun and the heat and the rain and the swell. Um, make sure that that mass transit works over next year, and better than that, we'll use important benefits. Don't do that first, and hope that mass transit will somehow run through the bubble. Mass uh, the parking vehicles are gonna provide sufficient space for local population, why someone might slightly clean. Because the builder wants to write his own ticket. Owning property upon which the general public will be living means you have to provide a safe and fashionable place for them to live and for them to commit. This is not a piece of land the public to develop or wants to build a home for his own family, so therefore it's not purely. Private property in the way that it manifests. It's really public property, because the general population will be there. He wants to develop it for the general public, then he needs to provide adequate parking for the general public. Based on long established parking limits. How will Garden City fix the problem after the fact if the residents still over into neighboring streets? And this was brought up already. Will Garden City police increase their referrals? It's been called the traffic service to, to show that Hacksaw Houston would respond to that. How will you proactively anticipate and then react to effects of insufficient parking for residents and developers other? Who will monitor it? Who's going to monitor whether the developer has enough of the hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars savings to live in? Is he going to lower rents to secure, how long is that line? Everyone's expense, not an intention. If the changes are made, will they be retro? Our current developers who have wealthy family housing projects in Garden City, going to remove these parking spaces and build another. Buildings that can warrant us with fewer parking spaces. Will they lower the rents rates? Who's gonna monitor that? Because all of the hands of the developer to do the right thing on his own, all their own. It's changing, later city San Francisco, San Diego, California, if you didn't get a chance to, I thought. This isn't San Francisco, this is New York, this is San Diego. This is Treasure Valley, Garden City. So, let's make it about Treasure Valley and Garden City.
Oh, you did well. Thank you. Thank you. Any questions, council? Okay, thanks so much for coming. Uh, Parker Massman. Welcome, Mr. Massman. Uh, if you would, give us your name and address for the record.
Parker Mossman.
Mossman. I should know that too.
Let's not get into that.
Okay.
In Garden City, I'm uh, just for a little background, a lot of us are gonna say a lot of the same things. I'm a retired architect. Many, many years ago, I was on the committee of the Royal Landline that reviewed the ability. Requirements regarding the city. And our whole, the whole reason for doing this is to make sure they are consistent, the other communities. They are, at least they were then. Uh, I have a lot of innovations about parking capacity for apartments only. The lower income apartments typically, or frequently, are occupied by more than one adult. I have a grandson that is cohabitating with a friend of his apartment. They both have cars. That's gonna happen all over town. With Garden City. We've been told by the development of the River Flow Apartments. How, over and over again, how. How desirable they're gonna be. They're gonna, they're gonna be the most sought after units in town. And that means to me that they are not going after low income people. They're going after. People with some income, some, some money, and they're obviously gonna have total one, one deal. With any of those units. This is Idaho. I mean, we, we like our freedoms. People not only have, have their own vehicles, they're around. We can live here, most, a lot of us live here because we wanna play in the mountains. And in that game, recreational, we have sometimes. Which needs space, and needs storage as well. Nice. That was, I, I built a lot of the townhouses over at Adams and veterans. This week then, and some of those units actually have garages. There wasn't an apartment space available along the street. Or in the slots provided to those units. And I assume that's because of one, the one garage that was open that I saw. It's that, or to store it, you know, pay extra to store it someplace else. That's uh, the opinion, but the opportunity, I'm sure other people are gonna have a lot more to say.
Thank you very much. Any questions, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Mossman. I appreciate you and everyone else being here and actively participating in government. I, I have a question. I think I heard in your testimony, you said. Earlier in your life, you were part of a recommending body for.
When we viewed the building. Required regulations for Garden City, the Royal Landline, you know, used to be very active in Garden City as well. And the, I guess because I lived in Garden City, I and a couple other people in review. Were required on the city parking, this is part of the regulations.
And your, your finding, I heard you testify, was that it was consistent with our sister cities? Is that correct?
Yes, it was at that time.
Uh huh, and then I heard you say that.
Yeah.
My question is this, as our community changes and. Densifies, should we remain current with our sister cities?
There are more people that have moved here, they, yeah, moved here because they wanna play in the mountains. Everybody seems to have a car. Then when, when I drive around town, I don't see many smart vehicles. I see a lot of trucks and SUVs. So I mean, part of the proposal for this was also to reduce the size of the parking slots. I go last thirty-seven years ago. I can't get half the SUVs in my garage doors. I mean, it's, it doesn't make sense that, uh, they're not only limited, they're not at the spot, but reduce their sizes. But this was Europe, where everyone's riding a smart car. But, you know, parking spot is only ten big, oh, yeah, that's fine, but this isn't Europe.
Thanks again for your time, Mr. Mossman.
Anything else? Great, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Art Peavy.
That was pretty good.
Oh, we wanna hear from you, Mr. Peavy. Welcome, uh, if you would, give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Art Peavy. I'm a proud citizen, a voting citizen of Garden City. I'm a citizen of Six Flag, Six Flag West Plantation. Hey, I've never testified in one of these before. But I, I'm not familiar, spent a bunch of time today reading the section. No quality information, it's on the website, it's all stuff. That's all I've done, I couldn't understand much of it. What I do kind of feel is that the city council and by me, I think, are here for citizens of Garden City. And as such, I, I look at what I think your obligation to Arton need. And for me as a voting citizen, to be reasonable in what you, the decision that you made. And this is a hard one. Because I can't understand why you limit. Want to reduce the, the parking. I, I don't understand for the citizens like me, why you do that. I understand the people that afford big houses, little houses, apartments, and all that stuff. But people that live in small houses, they have bicycles, and they have strollers, and they have jet skis sometimes. And all those go with the drive. Part of that I was reading in the notes that I read today was something about Boise, and I think about. Sun Valley, maybe there was some documents in there about, Ned said that, that it's illegal. To put your household items in the, in the garage spot that you have. Oh, I got driving down the road today, and I saw four of my names with their garages open. Guess what? They're all filled with dogs like mine. So I, 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 I cease not to do anything stupid. And I'm sorry, I think it would be crazy. I don't care what Boise does, we don't have to follow it. And even less, let's hear what New York does, or San Francisco, or Sun Valley. Still makes sense to have more parking. But I'm sorry, but I don't think you want to force people to park on the street. I happen to like a restaurant in Garden City. And I come down there every once in a while, and it's right down there, you can just say, I'm a Rusian Cafe, I think.
Mm-hmm.
That's a brand new development. And you can't even drive down the street. The street is narrow. I don't know how many garages there are in there, but the street is narrow. And there are many, many cars parked on the street. You can hardly even ride down the street. I uh, I, I just can't understand even thinking about it. So, that's basically all I have.
Well, 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 thank you. Uh. We are, we are thinking about it, and your testimony, uh, along with everyone else. Uh, that's testified uh, on the thirteenth, and then again tonight, is information that the council uh, needs to hear. Uh, it's uh. Uh, challenging, it's challenging for the council when we deal with issues where we have diametrically opposing opinions. Uh, but you know what? It's a little messy this government, but we will work through it, and we will do our best not to do anything stupid. Thank you. Uh, if, if I call your name and you had an opportunity to testify on the thirteenth, would you let me know? I'm trying to get uh, everyone. Uh, an opportunity to, to speak that did not have an opportunity to speak uh, two weeks ago, so. And I don't have the list of who's, you do. Uh, Barry. Lesmer, is that? Did I say it? How bad did I butcher your name? Oh, gosh. Okay. Welcome, if you would, give us your name and address for the record.
Sure, Barry Lesmer, three, four, seven, zero, North Plantation Rivers Drive.
Can I get spelling on, on your last name?
For sure, Lesmer, K L E C N I B R.
Thank you, Mr. Pudding.
I pronounced it right, James.
So this is a very estimated appearance for me, and also for my partner here. But um, a few things I just wanna say is, I've been homeowner in Garden City for a few years. I'm a volunteer at Boise Park and Red for maintaining the green belt. Around the trees, as well as removing not plants. I'm also a member of Golden Eagle Auto Boss. I'm very committed to my community and also to nature. Uh, I'll get friends saying I do not support changes to accommodate the developer for the arguments of. Uh, issues I've had tonight. Um, a few examples on this site, as someone who's relatively new. As by my experience in trying to get to certain places like Alchemist Hall on Twenty-seventh and Stewart. Which has been inundated with some recent uh, high density housing. Massive loss of parking. If I even try to get down there, I'm about three or four blocks away. I don't see a lot of access for people who are disabled who wanna get in there as well. Um, that seems to have been quite a rush for development and limiting people's access, but again, caring for the community. Um, where I live has a private age-like pathway that runs from North Plantation to the Greenbelt by the bridge. Spring and summertime, our street gets inundated with cars. We become an overflow for people wanting to access the Greenbelt. People park illegally. They can be there all day. And what we're trying is instead going to actual parking lines or access points. Our areas become, uh, greater concern for safety for people speeding, not observing parking laws. Uh, but that's concerned with what I have read through the proposal is to cut back on parking, making things less cannibal. Um, I think my proposal is for the developers to look into underground parking, which they want that later to make this money. Um, that's something I witnessed in California where developments, um, uh, rely upon underground parking, underground parking facilities that provide a safe and security Uh, based on just weather issues. Um, and then if there was parking for visitor, yes, those are usually designated. But to accommodate changes previous in parking spaces and west, that also has an impact on delivery trucks. And what I've seen from State Street with the amount of people speeding, running the lights, Amazon trucks, UPS, FedEx, they're part of delivery services. I'm trying to stand out What could transform State Street along with this development and restrictions on parking? Because I think it's only going to get worse, considerably worse If there are changes in the developers' favor. Um, the last thing I want to say is, um, I'm quite concerned about this. I will probably be kind of fearful of guests. But tonight I wanted to make a few points for everyone to know that, uh, someone relatively new, I do care. And, um, I, I think there's some wise voices here tonight.
Great. Thank you so much for your testimony. Any questions?
Mr. Allright.
Yes.
Mr. Klesmer? How long have you been a resident in Garden City?
Um I will say I'm in your house. I stayed up on a teacher, my dad, and passed and then, then you know.
Appreciate your testimony this evening. Um, other than underground parking, do you have other, you mentioned parking facilities. Do you have other ideas, suggestions regarding parking facilities?
One of my concerns is what they gave parking for permitted for meter. That will drive people away from those areas who will seek that free park. And again, that goes to the push of People seeking out residential areas for a little, a lot, three or four blocks away. Um, so that's something to be aware of. But, uh, as far as the limits I'm worried, I By reducing the sizes, I think it's going to be a greater risk for more accidents, accommodating, you know, traffic patterns, which I certainly am concerned about. But I think underground parking is something that should be considered.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else, counsel? Thank you for your testimony. Um, Michael T H I R. I can't pick out the last letter. Have you testified before? Okay, welcome. Welcome, if you'd, uh, give us your name and address for the record.
Theory, T H I R Y.
Okay.
Three, seven, nine, one. Graham R C Wayne. Eight, three, seven, oh, three. Hey, Charlie. Um, I'm sorry, uh, I, I missed the last, uh Evening on the thirteenth, I went to the phone, it's sunny, it was thirty-seven degrees and blowing sixty-five miles an hour. I want to cut this short because Park did a great job.
Okay.
Uh, I had a question about the one, two bedroom with one parking place. I mean Realistically, think about this. Let's just say Comparatively to what we see across the street, up and down on the north side of State City. I'm assuming that these residences are going to be At least of better quality. So then I'm also assuming That people who buy or move or rent or whatever in there, uh, let's just say there's an upcoming young Go-getter couple that has a, they're just married, they've got a job, and one has a job in England, one's got a job downtown Boise. They're not going to have one car. So my question is Uh It was mentioned that they're going to park on the streets. Well, what street are they going to park on? I think State Street. I mean, seriously, where are they going to park? Give me a street. Give me a name of a state that they can park on. Even if it's crowded, give me a name of the street. Secondly, and I've been a little developing myself, not like this project. But the point is, and I'm paraphrasing From a gentleman that talked to first. The point is If your building's structure You need to figure out parking. And I don't care if it's Eagle, Meridian, Boise, wherever. You have to figure out parking. And one parking space For a one and two bedroom apartment is not sufficient. Period. It is quite simple. But the point that he made is, well, these parking places have been lost. I'm sorry, I don't know the number. And the theory, I have no idea. But so it would be financially Spoilt to continue to build this if we had to build all this parking. My point is, if you're a developer, you probably should know that maybe that's not going to work. And, and maybe you should downscale what you're going to build. That's it. Any questions?
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Theory?
Yes.
Thank you for being here this evening. I want to ask you a question. Um, since you referenced a young couple buying and having two vehicles. Um, how long have you lived in your residence?
Forty years.
How long?
Forty. I'm still young.
Sweet. In your forty years, did you raise children in your residence and did they also have vehicles?
No, yeah, I've got three children.
And did they also then have vehicles while they were living in your residence?
As they got older, yes.
So that is one of the other questions that I think you need to consider is Depending on what new development attracts, if we're attracting family through bedroom, two bath homes, that will be families that as they age, The need for parking may increase off that.
I have a six-part rush that hasn't been met.
Oh, okay. Well, not applicable to you then. But thank you.
Here's, has more stuff than I need.
I will send code enforcement over there tomorrow. Okay, uh, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Uh, Eric Vogelmann. Fine. Okay, you said you had a, just a minute, Andrea. I'll, I'll have to find your Andrea, you can come up since I called the last name. I'll just find you. There you are. Okay. Thank you. If you would, give us your name and address for the record.
And I also received an email from another neighborhood line that was free out of town. Her name is Mary Lee Pospa. She does sixty-one oh three Plantation Lane. She wrote a real paragraph.
Can you spell her name for the clerk?
It's P O S P A H A L A.
Okay, yeah. If you want to read her testimony and then give us yours, please.
She says, I wanted to say that once the open space is built on, it is gone forever. Buildings will not be torn down until later. It's decided that more parking is needed. If parking spaces are provided and it's later determined that there's no longer the same demand for parking, then buildings can be done. Thus, the parking motion not be changed.
Okay, thank you.
I agree with her in that regard, but you need to restrict it to the school base. One space is not enough. Um, you've heard a couple of examples here, and I have a few more. At the top of Glenwood, um, right before you turn to Capital High School, there was a new apartment complex. They were kind of smaller sized apartment complexes. Shortly after they became available for rent, they hung a, a large banner advertising that they were open and leasing. But as we drove by, on Glenwood, on the side of this, there was a fence that blocked their little parking lot. And nearer, someone had painted in large dark letters, and excuse my language, this is a quote. Parking sucks. Now, obviously, someone rented theirs, was not happy with the parking situation in that apartment. Me, that's going to happen again, all over. Someone mentioned Luciana's Cafe, and that's my second example. Have you ever tried to go to Luciana's Cafe near the river of thirty, near Thirty-Sixth Street? You'll know what I'm referring to. It just so happens that I have a friend whose daughter lives in that townhome there, those condos. So she gives grandma and grandpa, they live in Boise. They like to visit often. But when they come to visit her, they have to park a half mile or more to get into her house. So they sit in their car, they wait for her phone, they call her, they wait for somebody to come up. It's because there's no parking and they can't walk the half mile, one mile because of disabilities. Um, one space is just not enough. The other thing I wanted to bring up is the Planting and Zoning Commission report states that the reduction in parking Will not reasonably diminish the health, safety, and welfare of the community. I beg to differ with that statement. It does affect the health, safety, and welfare of the community of all Garden City residents. The only individuals that benefit are developers who have no information in the book. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you. Uh, any questions? Thank you. Appreciate it. Carrie is a G R A B E. Okay. P Street. Ron Bush. Welcome, Mr. Bush. Pleasure to have you. If you would, give us your name and address for the record.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, my name is Ron Bush. I live at three, six, nine, five, North Graham Street. Please don't hold me, say, follow me too much.
We, we wouldn't dare.
But, uh, she was on my mind as I was listening to her spoken. Testify only what's in the best interest of the health and safety of the citizens in this city. Riding from my home, uh, tonight to Garden City Mall, I stopped at two intersections. Only saw four people speed through red lights, German red. Really. And about eight hundred people, someone did that, um, on a red light. But it turned red, seconds, three seconds, four seconds. And T-bone at that intersection. And she was in a vehicle that had new safety standards. She came through it in good shape. But she put the reason to kill. What they, what they said. These are real life things, the building. When, uh, earlier in my life, I've got someone give me some pretty strong advice that I've tried to listen to in many, old years around. But if, the more time you spend rationalizing about why a particular decision might be wrong or not made. It was likely to be the right decision. So all of these justifications for left parking, the rationalizations. Well, they're going to have fewer cars because they're going to be, uh, retired and they're downsized. Well, they're all going to be on their bicycles and they're going to be going everywhere on a bicycle. Well, whatever it might be. Well, we don't need as many, we don't need salt or as large because they're all going to drive electric vehicles that are small. Let's talk about real life. Here is why it's safe, uh, maybe, uh, just that. We'll ride pickups. Every one of us has been looking for parking because of, uh, many times when they go, they find two large pickups are parked in the slot and there's not room for a third car in those three spots. Or they're, they're parked, uh, in the direction that makes park with, I'm going to get in next to it. Um If, if, uh, these folks, and, and part of the reason I'm here is because I happen to see, uh, speaker alone. Art, I, I've done records of questions saying, I now have a year, uh, thirteen, fourteen months worth of email communications. Uh, with primarily concerning the river run mill. And that's why I'm just a moment. But one of the things that I've, I've come across is, uh, email communications involving the architects or the developer. And, um, asking the city, isn't there somewhere we can be relieved of this number of, of spaces or multi-family houses? Isn't there some way we can be relieved for the size of these spaces? Yeah, yeah, I mean, that seems like too much. Uh, of course, there are from California, developers from Dallas, Atlanta. Maybe they should come experience some real weather like, like, there's a lot of snow. How many parking spaces get lost outside because the snow builds up and isn't filed away or just it's good? A lot. Where I live, there's only one place for people to go, they can't find a spot to park. And, and multi-family, every desk and house might have to be constructed. Uh, on, on, on the, for the, the plant, the block. They're going to go park in plantation subdivisions and then make the way Uh, into the, you know. So, and that's not an isolated concern. You've heard references to other places in the city. So We need, it, it sometimes seems like we're, we're chasing latest trends in urban planning. And yet the American Institute of, uh, of, uh, planning professionals has a code of ethics that talks repeatedly about Reserving, protecting your existing neighborhoods. And acting in the public interest. So I refer to this, to these emails that I found between, uh, the developers and the River Club, Lincoln Property Company. And, um, and their architects and, and city officials, planning department, and others in the city. And what I, what I've come across, uh, For more than several years now, there's been, still dozens and dozens of emails and meetings and calls Uh, between the developer, Mr. Gusterson, attorney, developer, vocally, and the, uh, Lincoln Property Company And the architects and others about their plans for what they want to do over there to develop.
You're, you're going to tie this to the parking issue?
Well, I
Okay, I don't want to get into the future. Okay, sorry.
This is so important. The city is, you're, you're, you're on the threshold of a watershed home city. And making decisions about what, what is best for the residents of the city, uh, going forward. And I went to the meeting, uh, the other night in front of the, uh, Planting Zoning Commission's working session. And, um, Ms. Thornborel, uh, admonished the forty or fifty people who were there in the block of campus About the upcoming meeting of the Planting Zoning Commission. Said, remember, three minutes old, remember, these people are, are private citizens and they're contributing their time. I've served with capacity, so I understand how much, how much time it takes and I admire it. But you're asking people to try to understand, I've seen this been happening over several years, people working hand in hand With city officials about these plans, having all of that contact with them, and we're expected to never have contact with you at all. We're told we can't have contact with you at all except in a meeting like this. And we're supposed to respond to that sort of setting in a short period of time. And we're supposed to respond to that sort of setting in a short period of time, limited information. I've spent probably sixty hours in the last few months trying to get information, et cetera. And, and some of that that I found is, is found in the record now before the final zoning commission. But most importantly, in all that, you have to make this decision. You should be wanting to have the best fund of information, the most information relevant and, and important to that that you possibly can get. And that's what we need to try and do. And so, this process that's going on now over there is really important because it will, it will dictate what can happen. In other parts of the city, there, there also could be drawn upon that, and the same plan. And, and so, here, it's already shows that, because they got involved in this process too. And had opportunity to, to interact with the city on that. So I'm concerned of the city, I'm, I'm concerned of someone that's, that's, that's had, had the incentives where you make difficult decisions and always wanting to be certain that it's going to be doing the, the, that's awful thing to write, and, uh, that you have that information. Just mayor, I appreciate that you let me go along the three minutes I'm talking about.
I haven't been too legalistic tonight, if you've noticed. So, thank you, Mr. Bush. Any questions, counsel?
Thank you, Judge.
Yep, thank you, sir. Deb, is it Rydel or Riedel, or you'll have to? Okay, thank you. Dan Haller, did you testify last time? Okay, welcome, sir. You wouldn't?
Yes. The council, I'd like to see, and I appreciate your service, for this one to Garden City, and to our huge, and I want them to take a brief minute and, uh, and share some thoughts, as longtime residents of Garden City. My name is Dan Haller, and I live with my wife and at, the last twenty-nine years, at sixty-two fifty-four North Ferris Place in Hyatt Station subdivision. Subdivision where we've risen, we've raised our children, our three daughters, and I would agree with the individual who testified earlier that we do have, I think it was, uh, Councilmember Dorrit said this, that we have had a lot of having our children come over and spend time with us, and some would live with us beyond their adult years, and they need some parking, and it obviously has impacted them to great degree. I stand before you to say that we are opposed to the parking code amendments as presented there tonight, uh, for the aforementioned reasons stated by Mr. Bush and others in our neighborhood. We know it's a concern to a number of our neighbors here about decreasing the number of parking spots and the size of them. Well, I think we can all agree that we live in a community that enjoys its freedom, and it is seen in a wide variety of vehicles, large vehicles, large SUVs, uh, people love their outdoor experience. And I think by approving these parking code amendments, we will see that we will be increasing parking pressure on existing neighborhoods. And that preservation that Mr. Bush talked about, preservation of existing neighborhoods, preservation of the quality of life that has contributed so much to our community over a period of time. I think it's an important lens that we all need to keep in mind. And this is the watershed moment, as Mr. Bush mentioned, for the city council. You have a large issue in front of you, and to be able to, to dig deep and understand the issues that are concerning residents here, and creating a transparency of concern to, and this, in my mind, is tied to, even though it's not on the agenda, the River Club property development proposal. Because if you decrease property, decrease, excuse me, parking spots in those, uh, proposed development areas, you're gonna be increasing the pressure on that existing neighborhood, not only on our whole set, but in other areas of the existing neighborhoods. And that just stands to reason as people look for other spots to park as we have growing communities. So that would be the extent of my comments on this, and for the question.
Thank you, Mr. Haller. Any questions, counsel? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, John Livingston, did you testify last time? Okay, I'm gonna move you down the list then. Okay. Uh, Jacob Clough, I'm gonna do the same for you. I wanna get, make sure I get to everybody that didn't testify last time. How about Stephen Sterns? Yes. Welcome, Mr. Sterns. Uh, if you would, give us your name and address for the record.
Thank you very much. My name's Stephen, also as well. My name's Stephen Sterns. I also live in three, four, seven, zero, Plantation River Drive. Um, my house is right on a private HOA access to Greenbelt. Um, and we already are seeing pressure on parking in our neighborhood, which needs to be done for a regular issue in other services. I'm here to ask you, please keep the parking as a variance as the way they are today. Um, with the additional developments and other growth in Garden City that you're seeing. Um, the ability of people who are living apartments in other places to have vehicles at their places of residence is critical so that the overflow is, is gonna end up in the streets of, of plantation community. Um, I see, do you mean the fact that the pressures of growing population are one that's going to give great pressures on how plans are going to work in the treasure that our in Garden City going forward? You can't change the parking variance in both, that somehow transit and your transportation problem is suddenly miraculously happening because you're principally not allowing people to have access, even though you're doing it as individuals. And because of that, I think, to reference what I said earlier, we're putting the cart before the horse by saying that we should change the way that people live in the urban environment. And then afterwards, figure out how they're going to work, or how they're going to be there for recreation. I can see already that if the argument being made is that people should take bicycles or be, uh, off foot, et cetera, what that means is they're gonna be further into the plantation neighborhood because their access today, the bicycle, is going to be a green, and that means that pressure is going to continue. And there is no solution right now. So the best thing, I think, right now is to hopefully for the council to basically not change these rules, ensure that the externalities that should be imposed on developers for what they're building and the type of residences that they wanna grow should be on the developers, so it doesn't end up in increments where it will cause a negative externality.
Great, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions? Great, thank you, sir. Hey, let me get through my list here. See, I know Anne and Jason testified before. Francis Fallon, did you testify last time? Oh, you did. Well, did you have an opportunity to express your opinion last time?
I just raised the issue of the parking size, that I was forgotten, but I've committed to testify today.
Do you have anything new to add?
Yes, sir.
Okay, come on up. You would give us your name and address for the record?
Thank you, Mrs. Francis Fallon, from five two two East Fortyth Street. Uh, thank you, mayor and council members. Garden City in terms of growth and potential is a very new city, which I believe is a great, very great place for it to be. After all, when it comes to the others, other successful, big and small, urban centers around the country or the world, there are already decades of learnings to harness, decades of planning mistakes, and work being made. So that we are tomorrow, we don't have to make the same mistakes. The trend is clear. Garden City, better or worse, will never again be as small as it has been before. It will not shrink, it will not stay the same, rather it will continue to grow. The question is, will we harness that and enable growth to our benefit, or will we throttle it and paint it into a corner because of it? There are cities around the world that have done density and walkability, often through happy accident, uh, quite well, largely because they were built before the automobile. It's easy to think of destinations like Manhattan, Paris, London, Barcelona. Cities that within the heart of the city offer a lifestyle where people can easily walk outside and have immediate access to a rich experience with many businesses, eateries, et cetera. And then by contrast, there are cities such as, let's say, Houston or Los Angeles, as an example, that exhibit urban sprawl, huge parking, parking structures and lots, and essentially no one. And then, but today, there are also hundreds of, of many great cities that have taken, uh, learnings of Dr. Shute to heart and has enacted legislation, remove all parking regulations. Buffalo, New York, Hartford, Connecticut, Minneapolis, Edmonton, San Francisco, South Bend, Bozeman, Bismarck, North Dakota, Twin Falls, and even Ketchum, in a few. Given that growth is inevitable, my wish for the council is that it take a very long, maybe fifteen years out, because the decisions we make today, especially along the most desirable areas of our city along the river, will be lasting. I know this is not easy to do, with so many citizens concerned about the present. But humbly, I would ask that the city remove parking regulations at the very least with, within the destination areas of the city along the river. One fourth point, um, is that I am not a parking expert. My sense is that very few of us here are. That's why education is important. I have tried my best to educate myself, but my knowledge is limited. Therefore, I would humbly encourage that the city, with the full of its budget, to consult on this very important issue. Whereas it's likely, most, uh, whereas, whereas it's likely most of us have just spent a few minutes thinking about this ahead of a council meeting, there are actually folks that work on these challenges full-time as a profession. Some like Dr. Shute, who is not an developer, have made it their life's work. Also, let's not make this decision totally about ourselves, but rather make, make these decisions with a mind towards the citizens of Garden City, let's say, ten, twenty, fifteen years out. Um, if we do that, I believe from what we've seen, the parking, um, if we do that, I believe from what we've seen, the parking size is fair, that we need to move, remove parking.
Great, thank you. Uh, any questions, Mr. Fallon?
Mr.?
Yes.
Mr. Fallon, I, I have a question for you. Um, so you indicated that, um, we should remove parking requirements, particularly for destination, uh, areas specific to along the rivers, what I captured. Um, how do you counter that to other folks in here that are saying, hey, we've got people parking in front of our house in the neighborhood, on the street, creating issues trying to access the, the green belt in the river?
Sorry, sorry, you said, uh?
Sure, I, I, I'm, I'm asking what your recommendation and how we could reconcile your request to eliminate parking requirement for destinations along the river while we have others saying we've already got a problem with parking?
Um, I'm trying to leave myself out of the equation. I don't wanna, I don't really, I don't think my point, my opinion, that matters very much. I'm trying to just focus on the best science that I've seen regardless. There could be, you can, like, if you cross-examine me, that you can find really false with my answer to all these things. Because I have not, I've only scratched the surface on this, and I have little things to it, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna to paint myself into a corner or speak less well about this, about this issue when there's people out there that can stand up here and tackle all of these issues that have dealt with it and researched it, educated themselves day in and day out for their entire lives. The, the, the information is out there, we're willing to seek it. Um, I, I, I prefer not to, to even comment on this.
Well, I appreciate you being here and your testimony.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Fallon, thank you for your time being here today. Uh, it's truly appreciated. Uh, I, this is just a question of your opinion. Uh, let's like, let's leave the science out of it. If you were to name the five, pick five destination areas in Garden City, what are they? Today, as, as we are today?
Five destination areas, I would, I would say the Waterfront District. Um, I would say the area which I'm currently designing seems to be, uh, not becoming a destination because I'm very close to the border. I think that's, that's coming up. I think the Fairgrounds area has, is going to become an area, such in fact. Um, but anything, I think, just generally along the river, um, I consider that, I hope that the whole river is, is the destination.
What do you enjoy about the river, Mr. Fallon?
Wa- walking out to with my, with my girls, growing rocks, getting dirty, um, and then also having, uh, the access to the places that I love. We love to, you know, take our bikes down to push them or, or, you know, to Webba, or, you know, so we, we sort of stay between veterans and, and Waterfront District. Um, but I ride my bike and I'll loop all the way around too, so I'm, I'm just constantly utilizing the river for, for many points of view.
Do you have people parking from your home to access the river?
Yes.
And, and, uh, what is your, what's your thought about that, sir?
Um, I think they should be able to access the river too. Um, and, and it's, you know, during the summer, that's, that's what happens, people park in front of, on, on Fortyth Street, the park at the end of Fortyth Street. Um, there are even signs that say, don't park there, but they do, and I don't mind, I'll follow up and think about that.
Are those your signs?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Fallon.
Thank you. Uh, counsel, we have, uh, I'm gonna let you know of people that have signed up to testify, that signed up last time. I'm gonna allow the counsel to recall them if you have further questions. I don't wanna open it up and let everybody start speaking twice, or we're gonna go, uh, complete another roundup here. Uh, Mr. May was an exception because of a request, uh, to absorb his material from the last meeting. He was invited then to come back and, and, and do the clarifications. But, um, counsel, we have, uh, Jacob Clough that signed up, uh, from last time, John Livingston. Uh, Deb, is it Rydel? Riedel. Life was lucky to get out of high school, so forgive me. Uh, Robert Clough, Hannah Ball, Jason Jones. Are there any, any of those folks, council members, that you'd like to recall before we close the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, by any chance, do they write yea, nay, or neutral, maybe get a, just refresh? I, I have a pretty good idea of where they stood, but maybe.
Yeah. Uh, they're not all checked, uh, so if I misrepresent anybody, please let me know. Uh, Jason Jones, uh, is in favor of, uh, revising the parking code. Uh, and his testimony has been recorded.
Yes.
Uh, Hannah Ball, uh, also is in favor of revising the parking code. Uh, she, as I recall, presented some, uh, actual, some planning philosophies to the council to consider. Robert Clough, uh, as I recall, uh, shared some parking challenges, uh, at his personal residence where he can't, uh, access the area in front of his home, uh, no place for guests because those around him have multiple vehicles that won't fit on their property. Deb, I got you in here like two or three times. I don't know what your deal is. Okay. Mr. Livingston, uh, is opposed to lessening the parking standards. Then I have, um, so counsel, does that answer your question?
It does.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Mayor?
And then?
I would like to testify after listening to Mr. May, uh, at the top, I would like to have three minutes for a rebuttal.
Did, did you, uh, did you testify last time?
No.
Okay, uh, give me just a minute. I'm gonna go through these, and then if you didn't testify yet, I'll give, give anybody an opportunity that didn't testify last time or this evening to, uh, address the council.
Mr. Mayor, also, have we considered the people on Zoom?
Uh, I haven't considered anybody on Zoom yet, so, um. Then I have, uh, uh, Gretchen, Gretchen Mossman that is opposed to the application to decline to testify. I have Ben Doty opposed to the application, decline to testify. I have Pierce Roan opposed, uh, to the, to the, uh, application. Are you Pierce phone?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, all right, all right, okay, I, you're already signed up, so I'll, I'll just pick you up. Russell and Sandra Ford. Don't wish to testify, didn't mark support or oppose. Do, do you, do you want to see less parking or do you want us to maintain a standard? Okay. So I'm going to check your list here. Okay, okay. And then Eric Fogelman, we already discussed. And then, uh. Okay, now, um, thank you, Mr. Roan, uh, why don't you join us up here? I'm going to change your sheet to, uh, wish to testify. Welcome, sir, if you would, give us your name and address for the record.
Yes, Ron, R O A N. And, uh, for the last, uh, twelve years, I've been the president of the plantation ownership subdivision. And, uh, just as a little background, over fifty years, I've been a commercial, uh, property owner, developer, builder. And, uh. A couple of the subdivisions, my company has been involved in our plantation subdivision and Riverside. Um, my company was the original company along with Ivo Timber that developed Riverside. The reason I'm here is because. I want you to take a minute and think about this. Think ten years down the road. I want you to think about the North End and parking in the North End right now. On the street, both sides of the street, car to car. You can't find a parking spot anywhere. They're, they don't have parking in the North End. Unless you have a house that was built after the seventies. So I want you to think about that. Because that, in years from now, is exactly what you're talking about having. You're going to force people onto the streets. And the bottom line is, it's a real mess. There's more accidents in the North End than anywhere else in Idaho. And you're asking our city to become like, uh, the North End. It, it, it's just beyond comprehension. You need to have as much parking as you can, uh, get a developer to develop. I can tell you, after fifty years of selling commercial real estate. The number one thing that stops people from renting, buying, building. Parking, accessibility to parking. If there's two people living in a house or an apartment today, there's two cars. If there's three people living in there, there's three cars. Now, a developer can't plan for additional guests or whatever. But he must plan for our homes to be our homes, our residents, to be exactly as they accommodate people in today's world. Husbands and wives work. It takes two people to earn enough money. How many of these new apartment buildings do you think lease for less than fifteen hundred dollars a month? How many single people do you know out there, uh, earning twelve dollars an hour? That can afford a fifteen hundred dollar a month payment for an apartment? All the new apartments you see on State Street, all of them, all the way up to, uh, uh, Star. There's not one of them that rents for less than fifteen hundred dollars a month. I can tell you that right now. And the bottom line is, we're saying, okay, you don't have the right to park in front of your house, so you need to park out on the street. That's not an acceptable answer. I, I, I know that, uh, we're not here to talk about, uh, plantation, but I, I'm going to tell you something. Imagine in your mind, a seven hundred and fifty unit complex with no parking. Now, where are these people going to park? You're going to see this very soon. The last comment I want to say is, I know that this is a tough question. But it is a very important question. It's the future. And the judge told you tonight, you have to think of the future. More than just next week, or next month, or next year. Think ten years down the road. I appreciate your time, and I'll answer the questions that are.
Any questions, council?
Well, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Roan, as a developer, Mr. May made an argument and, um, had a presentation that. It's in the developer's best interest to have parking, right? And, and because without, to your point, without parking, he wouldn't be able to rent or sell one of his units. Do you feel that developers, in your experience and, and what Mr. May presented? Would, because having parking is in their best interest, that they would have adequate parking or, or? You know, that argument is like, let, let us take care of it because we think we know what parking is needed. For, in order for us to make a living, right, and sell our units, because if we don't, we, we won't. So I just, it'd be interesting to get your perspective on, on allowing developers to do that, and do they do the right thing?
I can tell you for a fact. Banks will not lend if they think that you are under parked. If you don't have enough parking for their minimum standard, which is, guess what? Two parking spots, not one and a half, not one and a third, two. And.
Is that, is that per three bedroom or two bedroom, when you say two?
Two, two bedroom.
So a two bedroom, two plus spots, so in your experience, banks won't lend unless you have two spots for every two bedroom?
That, that is correct. And the, I believe the existing code is two, is it not?
Correct.
Yeah, and so I am here to tell you, don't make a big mistake. Don't go down to one and find out that there's no more land for parking.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, thank you. Anybody else that has not testified in either the last meeting or this meeting that, uh, has decided you'd like to testify? No, I'm, I'm not going to give everybody a second time, uh, otherwise I'm going to open it up for everybody. Uh, anybody online that hasn't testified last time and would like to testify? If you do, uh, use the raise your hand prompt on Zoom. Okay, uh. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We do have one hand.
Yeah, I, I see that one, okay. Thank you, sir, if you would, uh, give us your name and address and, uh, we'll do a sound check first, okay?
Okay, uh, my name is David Patterson.
You're muted right now. Let's see if we can get that corrected. Uh, you're still, you're, you're showing muted there. There, now try it.
Hello, my name is David Patterson.
Sir, we're not getting your audio. I'm so sorry.
Um, I don't know what to do.
I'd tell you what to do, but I don't know what to do.
I don't know what to do either here. Let me, let me look here.
I can hear you, Dave. I can hear you, Dave, but the dais can't.
Hello, um, what do I do then?
I'm, I'm sorry. We're not able to, to get the audio connection.
One more time.
Yep, can't hear you. Okay, council, uh, we're going to have to, we're going to have to move on, um.
Mayor?
Yes.
Did you ask the audience or the participants if anyone here is interested in, or came to speak specifically about commercial parking? That has not been something addressed today, other than, uh, in ancillary, where residential parking was mentioned first.
Okay, so you're describing commercial as not multifamily?
Commercial, commercializing business, manufacturing, restaurants. Yeah, that is part of our proposal, or the proposal before us.
Okay, uh, the council, that's a decision for the council to make. Oh, let's try the audio again for the person online.
Hello? Hello?
Say, say something.
This is, uh, David Patterson. This is David Patterson.
Somehow have him muted.
Hello, 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 test, one, two, three, test. I'll send in a, a written, uh, document tomorrow to the council. Is this better?
There you go.
Working now?
Okay, uh. Okay, uh, let's try this again. Can you give us your name and address for the record?
Uh, my name is David Patterson. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Mr. Patterson.
Okay, I live at, uh, sixty-three, twenty-six, North Charleston Place in Garden City. And, uh, did you hear that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I haven't got a prepared statement, but it seems to me just it's common sense. That any person that has one bedroom, even an efficiency apartment, would usually have one car, or at least one, one car. And try to get one car at some point in his life. And anyone that has two bedrooms. Uh, one, uh, usually it's a, can be either a roommate situation or a single person with a, uh, uh, s- uh, son or daughter. And the son or daughter could be in high school, and they have giant, uh, parking lots around high schools for kids to park in, therefore. All the high school kids want to have a car. And since this is going to be a, a high-end. Extremely nice, uh, subdivision or area to live in. It seems to me that, uh, e- even one, even a one-bedroom place should have two car, two parking spots. And a three-bedroom, you, we're so close to Garden, to Garden City is so close to BSU. That, uh, it could be a roommate situation where you have three cars in a three-bedroom place. And Ron Bush made the point that when it snows out, they got to put snow somewhere on it, and if we get two foot of snow like we did in Armageddon. The, the number of parking spaces in a parking lot will be half as it wa- as it was before. So it just seems to me that good common sense means that. We all have kids and we all, and we all have a wife, and I know that my wife, I, I'm in Arizona right now. And a big controversy here in Arizona is that, that where I'm saying you can have one car per location. And it's a huge problem because. People have two cars. That's just the way it works. And they want to charge eighty dollars extra if you have a second car where I'm at in my location right now. I, obviously, these are long-term decisions you're making. And if, if the decision is made that there's not enough parking, how is it going to be corrected in the future? It won't be corrected. And. Perhaps the answer would be, if they, if you do have zero, uh, cars per efficiency apartment. Then the person who rents that apartment should sign a document saying they will not have a car. And if it has a three-bedroom apartment being rented, the person, um, renting that three-bedroom apartment should make an agreement, a, a mandatory agreement, they won't, they won't have one car. And that's not a real-world situation. That's just not the way it's going to be. I think that, uh, instead of decreasing the parking, you ought to think about increasing the parking and making Garden City a very nice place to live and not have. I, I, I don't understand, at least in the River Club, people aren't going to park along, uh, a six-lane highway or expressway going into Boise. Called State Street, then, you know, there's going to be no parking alongside that. So where are the people going to park if, if there's, on the River Club especially, where are they going to park? If, if someone wants to save some money as a developer. I understand that totally. Everyone wants to save money, but by saving that money. And that developer sells that property to a, a different owner, which is going to happen at some time in the future. The new owner now has that problem, and the developers long gone. In my opinion, you ought to increase the number of parking spaces to at least two per two-bedroom. And possibly two-point-five for a three-bedroom, and even efficiency ought to have, you know, a man and a wife can live in an efficiency if, if they're. They don't have anything and cars aren't that expensive and everyone can, everyone can buy a car through a bank. An efficiency could, should, should have two parking spots too. That's my opinion, and it's just, it makes, it's just common sense.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your testimony. Do we have anyone else that's joined us remotely that wants to testify? Okay, uh, I don't, I don't see any. Uh, Councilmember Page, you wanted to hear some testimony from, on the commercial. Uh, Mr. Jones is prepared to do that, but if we start letting people testify twice, I'm going to open it up for everybody to get another shot at the council. So, what's the pleasure of the council?
So that's your decision, mayor? Whatever you think is best.
I think we've got the, the flavor of those that, uh, support a change in the parking standard. And we've got the flavor of those that don't want, uh, significant change in the parking standard. But council, I'm, uh, I'll, I'll stick around, but if, if we let somebody come up and testify a second time, I'm going to let everybody come up and testify a second time. That's, that's only fair. Okay, uh. With that, uh, I'm going to close the public hearing now. And, uh, for those of you, uh, listening, uh, the council enters the deliberative stage now. Uh, so they're going to discuss, uh, what they've heard, uh, this. Uh, ordinance draft that was sent up from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Has a lot of material in it, uh. And, uh, I'm going to attempt, uh, with the aid of Ms. Thornborough. To start, uh, narrowing the focus, uh, in whatever direction the council wants to narrow it. I don't anticipate that we're going to get completely through that process, uh, this evening. Uh, I think the. Uh, testimony by many of you, uh, uh, is taken to heart here. This is a comprehensive issue. It's a big issue. Uh, there's a lot of material to absorb. And. We, we need to drill down on something a little more specific as we go forward, in my opinion. Uh, so, uh, as the council helps the staff. Uh, narrow the focus, uh, this, this, uh, proposal will evolve in some fashion. There will be one more public hearing on this, but not until we get a little further down the road, so we have, uh, something that's, uh. Uh, easier to understand and a little more straightforward, hopefully. So, uh, that's what you're going to witness now, uh, so with that, uh, Ms. Thornborough, um. Has prepared some information to kind of get us started, uh, council on this deliberative process, so with that, go ahead.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you, um, and good evening. Um, just, uh, for the purposes of the record, um, at the last meeting, where the, the first portion of this hearing. Just for the purposes of the record, at the last meeting where the the first portion of this hearing, there were some late comments and it's just noting that those were included into the staff report and they are a part of the record formally, as well as Mr. May's presentation that he provided tonight. Staff really just has some questions and clarifications to start refining the direction that you would like to see the code. And so the the first is a question is the purpose statement aligned with the direction that you'd like to see the code. The purpose statement notes that the intent of the parking ordinance is to minimize the adverse impacts on surrounding neighborhood, on the surrounding neighborhood, including but not limited to congestion, traffic hazards, hazards and
Please forgive me. Some unnamed person has requested a short break. So we're two hours in now. So, so forgive me for the delay, but let's take a five-minute break so people can take care of any personal business they have. Okay, we're back into session at eight o'clock. So.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
In in looking at the purpose statement, there are two ways of addressing this. It's on page, it's the presentation starts on page one thirty-six of the packet, if that helps the council. And then also the ordinance starts on page eighty-nine, if you need to refer to the ordinance. And what I might do is allow for some time for the council to read the items that are identified in the the draft ordinance as the purpose of the parking ordinance, or I'm very happy to read it into the record if that's helpful. I might look to the council and see how many would prefer to read it themselves.
I would prefer to read it myself.
And then for the benefit of the audience, it should be showing on Zoom as well as up on the TVs and the projected on the screen.
It counts. So just let me know when you're ready to proceed. We good to go, everybody? All right, we have a question over here. No, I apologize. No. Okay, Jenna.
Thank you for taking your time to do that. And so that's the first large question that staff has, if the purpose statement is incorporating the the intent and the purpose of any potential parking ordinance. And and I'm happy to keep moving forward and just leave it all for deliberation or or
Why don't we, just so council, what we're going to try to do? Let's move on. We may come back to this. We're going to try to stop at various points to have some discussion about some of the particulars and we can I think the purpose statement can be probably interpreted about the same way by everyone that testified here because we have different ideas on how to meet certain goals to minimize impacts, provide for provide parking that's compatible with the scale and all those kinds of things. I think you can interpret a number of ways. So the so let's, let's, let's go on.
Thank you, Mayor. The next question, larger item that's in code is establishments of sizes currently current code just has the ten by twenty requirement of residential and silent on commercial. And this table is establishing based on the different parking angles, the stall widths and lengths, et cetera, per car. Other codes are very similar. The proposal, as it was recommended by the the recommending bodies, was this is really a minimum. It is some of the areas are of the smallest standards that I've been able to find. And so this slide, just for background information, the eight, or excuse me, the black is what's in the the draft recommended proposal. And the blue is in, for comparison, Boise's proposed parking standards. And so there are some areas where there's the codes aligned very similarly. And there are some areas where the code would be a little bit smaller in size and just how to read that table. The top portion is the standard requirements and then there's an allowance for up to fifty percent for compact parking. And then the the second portion of the table would be the compact parking. And so that's another question. Is the recommendation spot on? Or or should the size? How does the council feel about the size?
Yeah, Mr. Councilmember Heller.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask?
Sure, sure.
Director Thornborough, what what was the, what was the? Can you succinctly tell us why the reduction in in these, in these numbers? What was the motivation or the explanation of all those folks who advised you on this?
And thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Heller. Certainly. There are a variety of standards that you can find throughout codes throughout locally, Meridian Eagle, Boise, or nationally. And the the idea was that this is the minimum and certainly individuals could go larger than what is required by code as a minimum, but the thought was to to allow for a very compact minimum standard.
These, these standards then accommodate the pickup trucks and SUVs and recreational vehicles?
And Mayor, Councilmember Heller, there, there would need to be, we could look at specific sizes of larger vehicles and at one point in time that was looked at, I do not remember off of the top of my head what type of vehicle was looked at specifically. And the size, I don't know if there's, I'm very happy to come back with different sizes of vehicles to to ensure that it would accommodate those.
Thank you, Jenna.
Mr. Mayor, yes, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Ms. Thornborough, just a question, are you? You mentioned you're looking for guidance. Is are you looking for guidance kind of on a page-by-page basis that we're going on this? Or would you rather have some guidance on just the overall code?
And Mayor, Councilmember Jacobs, there are some big questions in going through the the code that we've heard testimony that may conflict on some of the items and staff's hoping to identify if we're on the right track for different sections, but certainly if you just want to give overall guidance, you're welcome to do that as well.
I guess, I guess my question, when you're hearing from other council members and you're looking for guidance and we're not making any decisions today, but we're trying to kind of steer where we want to go. Is it better for you to kind of get the thoughts of the council members on what we think on the overall rewrite overall? Or or dive into the nitty-gritty details of spacing and and as we go down through each page versus for instance, do we agree with Mr. May and there should be no parking or do we not agree with Mr. May? Whether we, and then kind of if if the consensus is is one way or the other, well, that's a starting point versus, you know what I'm saying?
As that makes sense. Mayor, Councilmember Jacobs, certainly if there's an agreement in repeal, this exercise is unnecessary. However, based on the discussion at the last meeting, there was some dialogue by the council with the council, I think unanimously concurring that they would like to see parking standards remain and ensure that there's adequate private parking available. And so staff is working under that assumption. Perhaps that's changed tonight, but if the council is intending on working on a maintaining a parking code, going through and having specific feedback will help staff draft that feedback into an ordinance that may be something that the council could adopt.
Okay, Bill, start off.
Does that make?
You, sure. Yeah, 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 just, just give a overall, feel free, everybody, and then we'll back into the, to the detail as we need to. So I think you should just talk about your impressions and 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 what how you think this ought to kind of start forming as we go along. So
Thank you, because I think it'd be a benefit because if if we're all kind of on the same page and going down a path, and that will give you some direction, but if we're on different opposite, then that changes the direction. So
Go ahead.
I'll start. So thank you, everybody, for your testimony. One of the questions I I kind of have is, is why are we here and why are we having this parking discussion? And so based on my short tenure, I've only been on the city council for a year. It's my understanding is the reason we are really having the parking discussion is because the city was involved in the lawsuit in which we lost and we need to clarify our parking standards and make them more objective. And so that was mainly based on the multi-use aspect of our code because there's some ambiguity there that we needed to correct. There wasn't really any ambiguity or object, you know, on our residential multifamily code. So it was pretty straightforward. One, two, three bedrooms plus was two. And then we had a guest parking regulation and so forth. And so I guess one of the questions I have is I'm, I'm not in favor of having zero parking restrictions. I haven't really heard previously in any of the discussions that we've had on on developments of people complaining about what the residential parking standard was. So I guess my question is, why not leave it alone? I do think in talking with people in the community, I've had, I know a lot of people in the in the development communities, particularly in Boise, where they, they feel these are longtime Boise developers that we have to have a parking code. And they felt when I asked them about Garden City, they thought it was appropriate with the exception of our guest parking. So they felt that our parking code in terms of number of spots per bedroom was appropriate, but that we did need to reduce our guest parking requirement. And so in what you listed as proposed for the guest parking, I think is probably appropriate. So I guess for simplicity's sake, I would probably leave our residential multifamily code alone, change the, reduce the guest parking because, and then kind of move on where the reason why we're here and that's because we need to clarify the multi-use and focus on what, you know, what James wanted to hear about is the commercial side about and figure out what we want to do there. We want to use the table that you came up with, yes or no? One of, you know, you had different uses. And so I think I'm inclined to just leave the residential code alone intact, the way it's written. Reduce the guest parking because it probably is a little bit excessive, I think. And then let's really focus on the multi-use piece. And and what that looks like. I think the discussion regarding parking districts and doing all that is a whole nother topic. It involved the ACHD, it involves, maybe that's something that we want to take up separately as its own discussion, right? Because it's it's just, there's a lot of questions about, okay, do you meter, do you do this? You know, how does that work? How do you work base HD, all those things? And I think it's probably its own animal. And so maybe we ought to just carve that out, save that for a different day. It's not real, we're not really trying to determine you know, that today. On your slide, what I really focus on is number A, which is to minimize adverse impacts on surrounding neighborhoods. I think a lot of that discussion, what the passion is, the people living in other parts of the city, it seems we have some pretty different ideas of what parking should be, whether you live in the water district, whether you live in plantation, or whether you live in different parts of the city. And so maybe if the people that live in in the water district or things like that want a little bit more dense, from my understanding from Mr. Wadams, is they're more than welcome to request an ordinance, maybe a parking overlay for that district. And I encourage the residents in that part of the town and the developers that part of town of of getting their constituents in the water district and see if they can put forth the parking overlay for that particular part of the city. But the rest of the city, we have our standard codes the way it is currently written. So that's kind of my two cents on that whole discussion.
Well, thanks for getting this started.
You're welcome.
Okay. Other impressions, anybody?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Respectfully, Councilmember Jacobs, I don't believe that we're here because of a lawsuit. I believe the city was had to contemplate a code amendment because of every single applicant that we have seen that I can recall for the two years, two and a half years that I've been on council, council have had very vocal neighbors complaining that there's parking issues and that it impacts their existing residents, that it impacts how Garden City is growing and developing and it impacts the feel of the city. And frankly, we, I have had multiple times, folks report to me that Garden City has a parking problem. Whether that's residential, even within our own neighborhood, you know, the complaints regarding parking to access the Green Belt resignation. The the parking example around Luciano, that resonates. I've reported that many times from the dice. So Garden City needs to update as any growing city. I believe needs to review their code overall and parking was a part of that. The, the, the suit was coincidental, not a driving impetus to the change. Having said all of that, I do tend to focus on items A and B as far as the purpose. I I de-emphasize the the item, let me double check here, item. Where is it? H would be one that I, I, you know, would be DM, de-emphasized to me. The challenges I think we have is to your point, you know, very diverse needs from west side, the the residential development areas of the city compared to the very exciting old town, which is developing quickly with highlands. So how do we draft code that supports a city that is so diverse and is growing disproportionately in one area versus the other? Not that there isn't growth, but certainly that's an issue. So having used all those words, I do think that mixed use and commercial is, is when I walked in or contemplated that that was my primary focus of areas for opportunities for improvement. I did not anticipate or contemplate that the residential needed an overhaul or updating. Um, I did not um anticipate or contemplate that the residential needed an overhaul or updating. And I think that that's been borne out this evening, um, particularly, you know, two weeks ago, we heard. A lot of testimony from the old town area and they're embracing high density. This evening, we definitely heard more from the residential on the west end of town where they're saying, hold on, we like the residential code. And that's not at all surprising to me. Uh, it is what I would expect to hear, frankly. Um, so therefore, you know, if part of the the difference. Testimony that I've heard, that I pulled and and I focused in on um things like um. You know, I'm gonna try to pull some names here, but I I know a couple of. Weeks ago, I believe it was uh Brian Rollins, I appreciated his testimony. Um, he was a commercial developer, I believe, or realtor that lives in Plin- plantation, and his testimony was. You know, hey, I don't think there's a parking issue, but then um. When we hear if we reduce parking, it helps the affordable housing effort. Uh, you know, he went on to testify that he had a client, a dentist, I, as I recall. It wasn't the parking, it was the land cost, and I believe that's the barrier and that's the challenge for affordable or workforce housing. Is that the actual cost of the land? Now, you know, does Garden City have the resources to resolve that, will parking resolve that or will they? I don't think so. I think the resource there is, we look to the state, the governor has allocated fifty million dollars for workforce housing. I validated this with that Idaho Housing Finance, and they agree that they believe that that will be. You know, eighty to a hun- or eight hundred to a thousand homes, I think that's where we look to find the solutions for affordable workhouse. Workhouse uh workforce housing. So, again, my belief, my my recommendation. Is in agreement with Councilmember Jacobs, I do believe we leave the residential component. Um, I don't see a benefit to creating big changes there. Um, I I particularly, as I have sat here today, I believe the mayor refers to me as. The parking Nazi, but um I I do have concerns when we start talking about reducing size through code. I prefer if there's a need to make adjustments and allow for compact or some subcompact. That it be applied for as an exception. Um, we've we've managed that, I think, well, it isn't a detriment. And I don't think that leaving the residential component as it is will be a detriment to the city. Um, with that, I would shift and say in mixed use and commercial, particularly commercial. My preference would be to. Craft something that is use-specific. That has its pros and cons, of course, because the applicant could come through and then the use changes over time. However, if you go for the eighty-twenty rule, I think it's the safest play. Is, you know, we we plan and and address what we have on our plates right now, and then if needed, adjust down the road. Um, my example here would be, um, for instance, uh. North End Nursery, which I love. But, um, you know, during the the dormant months, they have ample parking, you know, they. I think probably half a dozen parking spaces spin up in a couple of weeks and you'll be lucky to park three blocks away. But, again, that's six months out of the year, perhaps, maybe, probably quite a bit less. So, I think that we can probably create a solution and definition and code. To to support a flexible yet manageable commercial code. The then the last component is the mixed use, and I think in those instances, I would err. Everybody knows me, I would err very cautiously with the more parking. Being more generous in parking than the proposed code amendment.
Mayor, if I may, uh, the proposed code amendment would take the commercial, the sum of the commercial required plus the residential. And so if you, if if Councilmember Jorgensen, if you might be able to give a little bit more direction on that.
So I think that the calculation for mixed use. Um, I would want to step back and reassess that. Um, and particularly cover the residential component pretty generously.
Yeah.
And then calculate the use commercially. Does that make sense?
And Mayor, Councilmember Jorgensen, it certainly does, I'm just not clear on how that, the current draft. Of the proposal does not do that.
So perhaps I don't have a clear understanding, but I thought the proposal reduced requirements. For the commercial component.
Um, Mayor, Councilmember Jorgensen, the draft pro- proposal as recommended has. High, medium, and low and negligible uh commercial parking, and then it has the residential parking. And then mixed juice would be a combination of those, so it would be the sum of the residential plus the sum of the commercial.
So I, again, thank you for that clarification. Um, I think the residential component calculation rather than. Being a flat table should be, again, you know, calculated based on use or trips. Vehicle trips.
So combine the sum of the two as Jenna's proposal, so we have the residential, and then whatever we decide for commercial, you'd add the two. So if I have a a. A building that has residential and retail below, then they follow residential code. The housing part of it, and then the commercial, they would follow whatever the table says for that, and that's the new spots they need.
Correct.
So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask?
Sure. Let's just make this free flowing.
Uh, Jorgensen, uh, so, uh, but but uh. I understand that, uh, but that's premised on using uh the existing residential numbers rather than the reduced. Um, residential numbers, is that correct?
Correct.
And and with possibly the exception of guest parking, although I'm I'm uh skittish about that as well. Uh, reducing that as well. Um, but not as much as I am concerning the reduction of uh residential parking. So, so would that satisfy what what I'm hearing is sort of a bifurcation of um. The the elements, the residential uh from commercial with mixed being. As you've just stated, something that to look at, uh, I won't say on a case-by-case basis, but uh. With a rational. Uh, and hopefully objective uh standard, depending on use.
Correct.
Yeah.
So the only question I have, Teresa, is. Currently Jenna's code has high, medium, no, low, low, medium, high, or high, medium, low, however you want to look at it. And it's pretty clear, so for instance, as high as one to five hundred, I believe, and then it had ratios, and I I like the ratios. And it kind of puts puts them in those three buckets, which is pretty, for me, anyway, I'm I'm a I'm a simple man, it's easy to be an understanding. The use component could be infinite, right, so how how I guess the question is, is how do we boil that ocean of use? Into, or is there a way to combine those two? That we we put those uses into a high, medium, low, so it stays simple. And ma- maybe a bigger list, so to speak, I guess, you know, I have suggestions on that.
I think, I think we we have a lot of that in our code now.
Okay.
Uh, as far as categorizing types of commercial.
Yeah.
Uh, and, um. Uh, you know, because there's. There's uh high-impact uses uh that are gonna have. A different, being a different category than a, than a low-impact use, uh. Uh, like an office warehouse for online sales where you've got.
The reason I'm asking is I like that I have yet ahead of it. Because it's easy and even, you know, the the high at one to five hundred is actually more lenient. Than most of the cities in our area like Boise. You know, not by a lot, but or it seems fair, I guess.
Yeah, and I think there's some latitude you can. You know, when you get in, if you, if the if the direction is, um. Uh, I haven't heard from Councilmember Jacobs or uh. Page. I went to introduce him years ago at a planning, at a function and forgot his name completely. So, but that was before he was on the council. Uh, but I think I'm seeing that that a potential that might be able to coalesce at least around one decision. That uh guidance, and that is the residential parking standards, so by. Uh, not multifamily, but the residential components in the code, so that's. Uh, uh, if that, anything that's not considered multifamily, so it's gonna be single-family. Uh, duplexes, townhomes, that sort of thing. So you're happy with the residential parking standard now?
I think, and and well, it isn't. Because how's that different than the most, than the most? I guess I'm maybe my confusion is.
If different from multifamily residential, is that?
So, our current code is. And one for one bedroom, two for two bedroom, two for three, three plus, correct? Whether it's multifamily or single family or, so I I guess.
Per unit.
For you, so for to me, that code, whether it's an apartment or house, it seems solid, I don't I don't think we have a real problem with our. Residential multifamily code. We can have a discussion on the guest parking, you know, and that was just feedback that I had received from some Boise developers that felt that. It was just a little bit too strict. Um, but then it seems like the bulk of the discussion is more centered around. Theresa's point regarding the the mixed use and commercial, and then what that looks like, and then when you're developing, you combine it too.
Um, Mayor, members of the council, if I may, uh, the the way to read this slide, this is in the draft pro- proposal. And as I appreciate that everybody's referring to it as my proposal, I assure you. Uh, that I'm just described, there's been a number of resources and input, and truly, it's at this point, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendations.
Don even used to name us Jenna's.
I do appreciate it, but I cannot say that it's it's Jenna's. Um, but this is the what has been recommended and is currently drafted. And so, um, current code does not address accessory dwelling units. Uh, the proposal is to not require parking for accessory dwelling units. Um, current code is silent on dwelling groups, and so. Uh, there has been, as noted, uh, the addition of one and two bedrooms, uh, requiring just one. Uh, parking space, whereas current code would require the two bedrooms and more to have two parking spaces. Um, and then current code is that for developments. With more than two dwelling units, there shall be five point five uh additional parking spaces for guests. Um, and uh consistent uh with uh Councilmember Jacobs. A conversation, there've been many, many applications from multifamily, and that's almost. Every single application that has multifamily uh will come up with the guest parking as a comment. Um, and uh, and so the solution that's been recommended is that to provide. Uh, guest parking uh for smaller developments. Uh, that that point five remain in place until ten units, and then after ten units. Uh, to be akin to what the city of Boise is proposing at the point one uh per unit, and that's also consistent with. Uh, what Urban Land Institute had noted is um a potential for Garden City.
Uh, so, so really, we need to make a decision on what the dwelling, the accessory dwelling would be, that's the only piece that hasn't been addressed correctly.
Um, and if you want to add, uh, group dwelling, um, clarify that uh two families would be. Applied to each dwelling within, um, and what to do with the guest parking. If if you want to leave two bedrooms and more at at two.
So, Jen, is there a way to, if I may, is is there a way to um contextualize um. Um, multiple family dwellings in terms of the setting? Because without guest parking stipulated in the in the um. Uh, on the property. By. Seems to me the only other option is a street parking. And and that requires or will require in some cases uh development of utilities and and sidewalks and and all those things associated with. Uh, safe parking on safe streets, and that, by the way, I think the expression was a parking czar. Not 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 to, maybe that's a distinction without a difference.
Thank you, I was already reading the headlines.
Yeah. Hmm, so, I don't, I don't know if that's a, if that's, if that question uh has a practical answer or solution, Jenna, maybe you can.
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Heller, um. Is certainly the the road system within Garden City is a component. Of of this ordinance where Garden City does not have a lot of sidewalks in the east end. Um, else elsewhere, it tends to be a little bit better, um, and that can constrain. Some of the parking decisions, so for example, looking at parking meters is a good example, if if there is a regulation. Um, parking meters would be difficult without a sidewalk system, however, there are are other options that could be addressed. Um, um, and that also the walkability, if there's off-site. Uh, parking um would be affected or is affected currently. Um, codes do address guest parking differently, some codes do have a ratio. Such as current Garden City code at point five per unit, um, others just incorporate it into their count. Um, a lot of codes do bedroom counts, and then some will do just straight. Um, areas, and then other codes such as Boise's code has parking districts, so their parking districts may have different uh counts. To address areas that have different parking needs.
But your your department uh thinks it's reasonable to reduce the guest parking requirement?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Heller, if you're asking for a specific opinion, um, my specific opinion is. That after a certain number of spaces, um, say you have a hundred-unit complex, fifty. Guest parking in addition to the residential parking is probably excessive. Um, however, if you have a ten-unit. Uh, development, there is a chance that you might have two neighbors with guests over at the same time, or you might have a teenager utilizing a guest space.
That's how I interpreted your uh conclusions.
So, and that again is, I guess, consistent with the recommendation, so.
Mr. Mayor and and councilmembers, one thing that I do, um. I I want to be a little bit cautious of when we start referencing Boise's code. Um, I I I get very concerned, particularly when we look at high density. Um, they have ample parking garages and options, Garden City does not. Now, I totally invite creative solutions for parking, but until we, and I. Don't, I, we don't have anything on the horizon as far as I'm aware, so, um. That's, that's something else that, you know, I I want to be sure we frame that properly is that. When we consider leveraging street parking, um, oftentimes. When we compare to the city of Boise, they have, you know, a parking garage every ten feet, it feels like. And and so without that option, we have to, I think, to ensure safety in the community. Do our best, um, I actually really appreciated, I think it was. Um, Mr. Rone's comments regarding the North End, because historically, the North End is um, has. The highest crime rate, um, surrounding break-ins, vehicu- vehicular break-ins. And of course, I think you can correlate that that is because of the volume of vehicles that are parked on the street. Now I've had that corrected, it's the third highest crime. Component in the North End, but it's still, I mean, that's a substantial number and, and again. If we drive folks to the street. Um, we have to have the resources to respond to increased crime or enforcing the parking district, which we're not prepared to do.
Well, we, no, no, you go ahead.
No, I just had a question, how did the other council members feel about? Given the diversity of the city of having. A separate. Overlays or parking districts? You know, I was, I was researching Seattle's code, and so. And Seattle has, uh, a couple parking districts, one of them's in the University of Washington area. Which is about the same size as Garden City, has borders like the lake and things like that. And they've actually, in that parking district, made their parking requirements quite strict. And having gone to the University of Washington and had to park my car a mile from where I used to live. I can understand that they probably had, they had really, if you've been to the U District and. Where your kids went to school there, I mean, the parking there is a nightmare. And so, it looks to me and, and kind of just looking at it, they created a parking district where they actually made the parking more strict. Where they wanted, you know, over, over two spots for a two bedroom. And a way to properly control that. But the opposite could be said true, is maybe areas down by the water district, if that's what. The, that group wants, is they can always apply for ordinance and have an overlay of a parking district for the. Or the live or create district or, you know, so I just, how do you all feel if, if we had? Overlay parking district? Is that an option for, it's not for this kind of be future, something we would do down the road, but is that something?
Do you mean in addition to the, uh, parking benefits districts?
No, it's just more of a separate conversation because we have such diversity in our city is eventually. I'm a proponent of leaving our residential code as is. And, and then really focus on the multi-use and commercial. But in the future, if we feel that, you know, maybe that area wants more density, a way to. Do that is to have a parking overlay in that particular area with the feedback of the people that live in that part of the city.
I'd be interested in hearing, uh, your concern, or us.
And. Mayor and members of the council, um, I, I think that the parking benefit district was an attempt to allow for future.
I guess it's the same thing.
Overlays essentially, um, and certainly, uh, we can look at that in more, um. Depth to make sure that it could go both ways, stricter or less strict, um, and really open up the, the doors. Another way to do it, um, is to look to other codes that just straight identify P1, P2 parking districts. Um, and create the standards now. Um, we really haven't explored in this process separating and identifying specific districts separately. Um.
And I do think that's a separate discussion for another day, right? Right now, let's focus on, you know, you know, what's the residential code and what's the commercial multi-use code and, and then, and then talk about. Parking districts and, and all that is its own topic.
Uh, any more comments just on the residential parking standard? That you're not. I think we, we got the flavor a little bit, uh, that. The residential parking standard, at least for the moment. We could move on and come back to it if a future decision. Either tonight or at another time, might impact that residential standard some way.
Compared to me, the residential standards as they exist now.
Correct. Yes, as, as they exist now. So, I'm just throwing something out so I can get her to the next topic.
Mayor, my apologies, um, with the, the council, like, just the, the space, the number of requirements that still specify the dwellings. It, the further clarity of some of the uses that are identified in, in code that aren't currently identified and how to address. In code, so adding, uh, the dwelling groups, the accessory dwellings, et cetera.
Okay, so the, the, the standard that, that's in code now. We need some additional categories to discuss.
So the, the mayor, um, the, the one change would be back to anything over two or more bedrooms would require two units, but then leave the rest of the changes as proposed. Is that what I'm potentially hearing or just nix? Any changes to the residential, including guest?
Um, I. I'm hesitant to try and speak for the council, what I'm, what I'm hearing is, is for the moment. We leave the residential code that we have on the books right now alone. Uh, and move on to, to the mixed use and commercial. Or any other, those types of questions you want to ask, so if I've mischaracterized that council, uh, speak up, uh. We're not through with this probably, but I'm.
Um, respectfully, I, I, I believe that statement is close, but I think the majority of council members, as I understand it, wanted to address. Uh, a change to guest parking.
Okay. Is that accurate?
Yes, in my, in my case.
Okay, um. So, uh, let's just talk about guest parking for a moment then.
I'm somewhat ambivalent, I, I kind of want to. Get through to mixed use and commercial and see what shakes out there to determine if we need to address guest parking. For, in the residential component.
Okay.
I just, I think, just so I understand, the one, number one variance we probably actually, people ask for is can we reduce guest parking?
Mayor, Councilmember Jacobs, I, I would believe that is true, and then there's another variance that was embedded in here that, uh. Instead of, to require cover parking instead of garage parking. Um, to allow some, for some flexibility in, in the size requirements that you see in the plan unit development waiver requests as well. And so that's another one of the changes.
So I think. And, and the decision that we've made, it seems like, um, I have, we haven't had very many people say, you know, I want to reduce residential park, it's always been around, surrounded around guest parking. And so, as, as long as variances are allowed, like they are currently, and we can address those as council and grant them, and, and if they. Recognize that our guest parking is probably a little tight, um, then, then we can't leave it be, and it comes up as a barriers. When someone.
Well.
Request that or.
As a. Yeah, yeah, I, I don't want to start using the term variance really. Uh. Well, it's just something that we can continue to just, yeah, something we can continue to discuss, so we've got. I, uh, guest parking is an issue we need to address, there's some.
accessory.
Yeah, uh, yeah, ADUs is another one, uh. And then covered instead of enclosed on those requirements for these. Uh, some of these applications. Uh. I have my own observations, uh, about how many. Uh. Uh. How many two-car garages you can put two cars in, how many one-car garages you can put one car in, uh. Uh, I have a four-car garage and I do get two cars in it. Uh, a car and a. One of these. Vehicles that, there's been some criticism of tonight. Quite large, but any rate, um.
There's criticism.
Uh, so the, the.
I think a fair number of the council members arrived at this meeting in those types of vehicles.
I know, I know it. Uh, but Jenna, I've had some spirited discussions over. Uh, and this, this isn't. Uh, we have units that require a single-car garage, right?
And mayor, currently, if there's a one-bedroom, it's a single-car garage.
Okay, so, um. So the discussion is. Is there, I'll make it a question instead of making a statement, because I don't have any empirical evidence, just my own observations. Uh, are single-car garages used to park cars in, in a overwhelming number of the cases and? Should they be counted really as a full parking space or a parking space at all? If you have them, um. That are covered as opposed to enclosed, there's less likelihood that your spare sofa is going to be out on the. Driveway under the cover, so we've had all these kinds of discussions about how you. How you try to calculate this and, and, uh. We have, uh, evaluations and opinions. And we have, uh, experts that are published and. Uh, at the end of the day, it's, this isn't going to be a, a, a perfect thing that we figure out, you just can't. Pick up every variable, so. As we start down this list, uh, I'm hoping we can, at least for tonight, and we, we are, we obviously aren't going to get done tonight. And, uh, I, I want to spend about another 10 minutes on this frankly, because we got a bunch of other business to do on the agenda tonight. If, if we, the direction we've given Jenna so far is corrected is. Uh, the residential parking standard as it exists today. With, uh, some kind of deference to the guest parking component. So can we give her that direction?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Uh.
Mayor.
Yes.
I know you're trying to get through this, but, uh, the change to the covered parking, or does everything need to remain in garage still?
Well, I, I was going to hit on that, okay, so currently, we require garages.
Correct.
Okay. Uh. Um. I, I mean, there's, there's pros and cons, so I think, uh, what I think I'd like to do, Jenna, it, with the. Permission of the council, you guys, this is, you overrule me anytime you want on any of these suggestions. I think that's something we need to think about, and I want you to think about, if you would specifically, about. Covered versus garages. Most of our single-family detached neighborhoods that are coming before us now. Uh, have, uh. A covenants, conditions and restrictions that are going to have. Garage requirements. Within the development, so. I think you can kind of set a lot of that aside, uh, because they self-regulate that, uh. But, uh. We're going to have other opportunities, particularly on the, on the. Uh, apartment types of complexes that we are. Requiring enclosed garage space. And counting that as a parking, uh. Think an example is right here on Strawberry Glen, the project is surrounded on two sides with garages. And they can be used, uh. To put a. Mid-sized vehicle in. Uh. Or they can be used for storage. So, uh, one of the challenges we get into is we think we have more spaces than we're actually able to use, so that's kind of a discussion that. That we've had, and I don't think you can argue that till the cows come home, but, uh. Uh, so that's another thing I think we need to, we need to think about and. Uh, I like being clo- personally, I like being closed, uh, on the Strawberry Glen project because it created a great buffer between the apartments. And the single-family detached neighborhood around it. Uh. Although if he's over on, on that street, most of the time, the street's lined with people parking on the street. So clearly. Uh. Some of that might be green belt access, but I suspect most of its residents that don't have room inside the project to park, so. So with that caveat of those two items that we, that maybe we can collectively think about, uh, and come back to. Uh, what would be the next thing on our issue, on our list, Jenna?
Um, there respectfully, a much more difficult issue, and that's the commercial slash mixed use, uh, parking components.
Okay, think about the ADUs too. I. Yeah. I, I'm not overly concerned about ADUs, because I just don't think there's very many places in town. That you can put them. Uh, unless Representative Nash's, uh. Legislative proposal goes through, which would overrun, override the CCNRs and subdivisions. Uh, I. I don't. Think that's going to get enough legs to get passed, but if that happens, then we can cross that bridge, we'll know in the next three weeks. Mr. Mayor, did we? My memory isn't serving me well, but I. I thought we had had a discussion about not, uh, including, uh, uh. Uh, ADU, uh, parking, uh, requirements.
Well, I, I think if I, if I remember, we, we had the ADU ordinance that we just did, and, and it. The parking was deferred to this discussion about parking.
Okay, yeah.
So we have to decide what the ADU code is going to be, because that ordinance deferred to the parking code.
No, I, I understand that, but, but I had, I had the impression that, uh, uh, council members were, um. Were explicit in. Um, forecasting a parking requirement for, uh, and beyond. The pad, the ADU would be, uh, built on, or I should say the foundation now. So is that, is that correct?
That was also my understanding.
Okay, so we've got three things I need to think about. Okay, okay, let's have a brief discussion, Jenna, on the mixed use, or whatever you want to go to next.
Um, mayor, I'll, I'll start into, uh, the commercial slash mixed use discussion, and, and I, I presume that you may cut me off at any time. Uh, current code, uh, defers. Commercial slash, and subsequently therefore the mixed use, uh, to the planning official based on criteria, and there's a few criteria. Um, and that is the item that has been brought up as being subjective and would need better objective criteria. Uh, should code remain the same, but that is an option. Um, we do see other codes very similar like current Boise's coding, not to keep going back to Boise's, but I'm very familiar with that and have looked. Um. At it in depth, um, and so certainly if the council is to stay with. A determination based on some sort of a parking study, that criteria would need to be sussed out, um, better defined and more objective. Um, some of the options that were looked at were a by use. Um, categorizing parking by use. And, and you'll see that in most codes where it's every single use might be a bowling alley, two per lane. Um, and you just go through every use that's identified in your code and set a standard. Um, we did look at that, that didn't get much traction. Um, and then we also had a one standard for everything, and that was one for 300, uh, square feet of structure. And that, um, was, didn't get a lot of traction either because of a fairness, uh, standard. We didn't delve deep, but building code for every, um, occupant that's in a structure, there is an occupancy load, so for example, this room has 500, an occupancy of 500. Uh, individuals, and that's, um, an option to look at as well. Um, but it doesn't capture outdoor uses, so say you have a farmer's market or something along those lines, how do you, uh, park that? There was a look at a repeal. Um, and right now, this current proposal has a my, a high, medium and low and negligible standard, so it is by uses. Except for it's taking the square footage, um, and grouping large chunks of the uses identified in code into, uh, high, medium and low. There are pros and cons to, to utilizing use, and this is per use versus new construction that's proposed in your code. So new construction, and if the council were to. So new construction, if the council were to utilize that, there are some pros to that because of the ease of administration. It would be as a building comes in. Then the parking could easily be calculated by, based on the square footage of the building. Would reduce grandfather claims, but it doesn't take into consideration of changes of use over time. Most of Garden City is built out. And particularly in the east portion, eastern portion of the city, we're seeing a lot of reuse of buildings and. And just looking at the liver crate area, you have push and pour, you have Wepa. And those are examples of, you have some of the wineries and breweries where. Existing structures were reutilized. With a much more parking intensive need use. And so if new construction is utilized, all of the existing construction, you can have churches and restaurants and bars move in. And, and you want to address the parking with those uses. And so code currently as recommended is based on change of use. One of the pros is it's specific to a use and however. It's difficult to define the perfect parking ratio for uses. Because you can have, for example, an office space that everybody comes to the office, and so there are vehicles parked. Because the office is used and then maybe. Like ITD, for example, a lot of their employees are still remotely in quite a bit, but they have an office. That's their office, and so their parking needs are quite a bit less. And so finding that correct number for uses is very difficult. And looking at codes across the nation and locally, they're all over the board, what they might propose. And then the change of use is much more administrative heavy, because every time you have a business. Leave a structure and a new business come in, then you'd have to calculate the number of parking spaces that are required. It, it may not be perceived as the most business friendly or adaptive reuse. And then there's a lot of shelved buildings or undefined uses, and you've seen them as a council come through where there, there's a, this will be a workspace. Or this is just a space. And so as those come through, you'll have those tough questions where you might have recently. Entitled applications that you have out there. There are a number of plan unit developments. And other applications that don't have defined commercial uses. Right now, this is based on use. There was a grandfather clause, but it, it wouldn't apply across the board. And so it would still capture all of those uses. So that mechanic shop that's now a church or, or a brewery. But that, those are just some of the pros and cons to consider. And I think objectively, the commercial side is much more difficult because. Uses are constantly changing. There's new uses. They have different needs. And then we have a large amount of Garden City that's already built out, that's trying to adapt to the labor use their structures. Or you have large multi-use buildings that are more industrial in nature that are constantly changing out their uses.
Let's, let's stop there for just a minute. So one of the things. That. As I discussed this with, with Jenna. When we have a new use. We have a new building. There's a parking requirement, whatever the. Whatever the. Council determines through this process. When it changes use, it doesn't necessarily, the property doesn't get bigger. It's, it's, it's what it is. So administratively. There are some real advantages administratively to. If there's a building that, that changes use and you don't change the building. You're, you're, you're maintaining. The same, essentially the same footprint. That the parking standard shouldn't be a component. That's. That, that, that's my view because you, it is what it is. It's.
Sir Mayor.
Yes.
I, I, I agree. I, I don't think we can legislatively solve for every foreseeable use. That I think is best left to the guiding hand of the marketplace. If the new use wants to come into a building and it's adequate for what their intended use is, then it's, it's a viable option for them. If it's not, they're, they're not going to look at that space. So as a legislative matter, I don't think we need to address that.
Okay, and that.
New construction.
That, is there disagreement with that? Really? Okay, so there's. I'll call that a W.
What about those, you know, what about those businesses who decide to build out? On, let's say, a, a parking pad that serve the freedom's business.
There's a trigger if they expand. You're talking about expansion.
Exactly.
Yeah, and say they have a, an office with a store yard behind it, the building, so they have room to expand and. And add parking.
Or, or diminish the parking by extending.
Well, well, one's a lot different than the other. So if you have the, if you, and whether the, the threshold is, if you've added. I think if it's, if your addition equals 25% or more. Space or value or some criteria. Then it triggers. Application of the new or the current codes. So. You had a, an office. And then behind you had a open space because you were a landscape company and you just parked trucks out there or whatever, and they opened and stored sprinkler pipe or whatever you were doing. Then the use changes and they need more office space. They'd have to calculate in. The additional parking they'd have to add in that, in the area that they have to expand into.
And that's.
So that's, it'd be like a new one.
That would be the new code.
Well, that would, that would be how. That would, in that situation, the parking wouldn't be grandfathered. It would, it would have to revert to the new.
Oh. Yeah.
Yeah, to the, to the new. Essentially, it's a different. Building footprint.
Valley is, we're not going to think of every variant.
No.
Right, you're not. Stand up. It just needs to be.
Long as there's a.
Pros than cons, right? And 80, 20 rule like. Councilmember Jorgensen said, and it's got to be something that's easier for the development community to understand.
So. So. So I think we've got that. So. Next time, let's look at some specific examples already in our code on how we would apply. The negligible, low, medium, high to the uses we already have identified in our code. And, and we could do that, couldn't we?
Mayor, certain, mayor, certainly, the, the uses that we have identified in our code are the uses that are utilized in this draft.
Okay, so, so you've got it right there. And then. And then that'll be a point of discussion.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, another point of discussion, just reading this code and kind of going through it is. Seems to me that we have an awful lot of. Reductions or. What's the right word? Equivalent parking, parking adjustments. Pages and pages and pages, pages of, it seems as, I would like to see that. Vastly simplified. Mr. Waddams recommended that we follow Eagles code, which I think was like two bullet points. You know, we, I think there needs to be a bullet point in there probably for affordable housing, you know, and some, and some barriers there, but. We've got to shrink that down to something like Eagles God or, or just less. It's just too, it just seems like it's too much in my opinion.
And I, I think we're at a stopping point. You guys okay with that? We've got other things on our agenda. We'll tackle what we can of what we talked about and, and come back and. This, this might take us a while, but we'll, we'll just kind of keep at it till we get something. So. Thank you all for your endurance.
And I might, I might recommend as we go forward with calendaring and noticing this, this ordinance, maybe chunking it. Into. I mean, it really feels like an elephant that we're trying to eat with each of these, these meetings. It's a little unfair to the public to, like, I feel, majority of people showing up for an interest in. You know, preserving the lifestyle they're used to and not really having maybe a whole lot of interest in. Commercial code. Or mixed use code, which is arguably more legislatively complex. So that might be a suggestion I would put to you.
We're. We're. We're going to do whatever the council wants to do. I just. Council President, let's visit. Between now and before we agenda up the next meeting, those of you that are interested, this will be on the agenda again in two weeks. And we'll, we'll kind of continue this, this process. And I'm. I, I'm. Got some things I want to, that I picked up. I really appreciate the discussion. Appreciate all the testimony. And. I will be on the agenda in, in two weeks. And. Unless the council directs me otherwise, I think we'll start biting this off at about an hour of time at a time. Because. We're over three hours into the meeting now and. I'm not sure the best analysis and decisions get made when you're. When you're, what you're sitting on has no feeling in it. So.
And Mr. Mayor, my preference would be to start with the mixed use.
Okay. Okay.
That's, as Council President, that's my preference, but I'd like to hear any opposition. Let's, let's start with the hard ones.
Okay, so we will plan on tackling the mixed use portion of the proposed. Next time, and for those of you that. We will try to get it early on, on the agenda, so anyone interested in coming and listening. Can come at a decent hour and, and we'll cut it off. My plan would be to cut it off after one hour. So that we can get people on to the rest of their life.
Mr. Mayor, can I just sort of point of order? I, I just have a couple of legal questions. Answers on now, but just a couple of legal questions. As I go through this ordinance, you know, it's 40. Forty-six pages long. There's some enabling legislation in here like on page 91, 92 and 93. There's also a enabling legislation. Takes up. One, from 127 to 129, and then the parking reductions go from page 117 to 126. So I, I mean, at some point in time, I'm going to ask, do we want, want the enabling legislation in here? I heard what Councilmember Jacobs said. I don't know if I've heard whatever Bill said, but. Some point in time, I'm going to ask, do you want the enabling legislation in there? Take it out for later. And what do you really want 10 pages of per reduction?
Yeah, I think those are things that are going to certainly come up, Mr. Waddams, and thank you for that reminder. There's a lot of things for. We're, we're getting immersed in this and. I think the, it's, it is a complex issue and we're just going to have to keep absorbing it, but that's a great point because, and that'll be certainly on the agenda. So with that, thank you all, and you're welcome to stay. We've got some exciting things yet to do here. Let's move on, Council to item G2. This is a resolution, resolution 1142-23. Approving the Garden City Public Flag Policy. Display policy.
Want me to cover that real quick?
Yes, cover that.
All right, I'll do it as fast as I can. I have a memorandum on page 223 of your packet, and what this is really about is in 2022. There's this case out of Boston that's Sherwood versus City of Boston. What the City of Boston did is they had a flag policy and, and they had government flags, and they said anybody else that wants to use our flag pole, you can, including, you know, pride braids. Whatever. So everybody can fly their flag until a religious organization came around and the City of Boston said, well, you can't, that there's separation of church and state. US Supreme Court came back and said, well, now you're treating religion differently than everybody else. You can't do that. So. What this policy is to say is to specify that it's not a public forum. It's not a limited public forum. The only flags that we're going to be flying are the flag of Idaho in the United States. And it's not a public forum. And so I think by having a policy like that, that was the mayor's recommendation. By having a policy like that, I think that will reduce the risk of any litigation over our two flag poles that we have. But it just simply clarifies that it's not a public forum. It's, it's government speech. It's not First Amendment speech. If you go through, so that's what my memo says on page 1, 233. The actual policy starts on page 226. I have, and what I would recommend is that the council adopt this resolution for this policy, except for I have. Shortened it. After talking to the mayor, we decided that probably we don't need to specify each. Holiday in here. So, so the new version, that's not in your packet, but the new version would say that we're, we're going to recognize federal and state holidays and, and itemize those. But really what this says, this is a couple of pages of saying that this is not a public forum. This is a government flag pole and we're going to use it for government purposes. There are a couple of examples in your packet. San Jose, which is who people have recommended that we look at as on page 228 of your packet. And then there's another model policy from a company called Lexipole. Now Lexipole is a company that the police, primarily the police. Use for their policies and procedures. They also have stuff for general municipal issues. And so on page 2, 231, there's another example from Lexipole. What the legal intern did was look at those two examples and come up with something that she felt was better and stronger. And so based on that, I would recommend adopting the resolution with that amendment that I just specified, if you don't itemize all the holidays.
Any questions, Mr. Waddums?
One question, Mr. Mayor. What is the POW flag considered? I think I've seen that. I don't know if they're on state property or not, but I was just, is it a, should it be allowed or not allowed?
So, Mayor, Councilmember Jacobs, so different cities, and I know this because I just went to a conference within the last year. Some cities allow POW flags. That's something that the council can consider adding that to. Right now, what this says is we're going to fly the American flag. We're going to fly the state flag.
That's it, okay.
Unless, unless the council has something else in mind, but we could specifically.
I just wasn't sure because I see that on a lot of.
I, yeah, I think for. I think my initial thought on this was let's. Let's get the public forum issue dealt with. And then we can supplement with a amended resolution at any time if, if the council should want to fly, for example, a POW flag or. Or some other kind of. Military related. Recognition. You know, we, we can always do that pretty easily.
And Mr. Mayor, just to follow up, it's a real thing in light of that Boston case, that now there are some other churches like the Church of Saint are going around and they're saying, well, if you have a. Limited public forum on your flags and the Church of Saint, we have a constitutional right to fly our flag on your city facility. So. So, so that's something, that's another issue. Pick your religion, whatever it is, whatever. It says we're not going to be flying religious flags. We're not going to be flying anything but government flags.
Good thing we don't have agitators in Garden City.
That's right. Okay, what's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to adopt resolution number 1142-23 as amended to summarize national and federal holidays.
Second. A motion and second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing that, we're calling.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes, thank you. Item G3, motion carries. Item G3, resolution 1143-23. This is a right, public records destruction. Items in your packet, are there any questions? Is that? Entertaining action?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve resolution 1143-23, a resolution providing for the destruction of public records.
Second. A motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all, hearing none, we're calling.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Okay, we need a short executive session after. Hey, we need a short executive session, uh, after which we will adjourn. So, um, we don't need to reconvene, so it entertain an action to move into executive session.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we move, that we move to executive session in accordance with Idaho's code, uh, section seventy-four dash two oh six one F. To communicate with legal counsel for the ages, public agency, discuss legal ramifications of legal options for pending litigation. Or controversies not yet being litigated but imminently likely to be litigated, uh, after which the regular city council will, meeting will adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing another third caller.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Okay, um.